Dr. Guadalupe. Dr. Hans. Mr. Lansman. Ms. Newman. Ms. Namie Dyer.
Present virtually from Farmington Hills.
Mr. Cowan. Ms. Root.
Here virtually from Rochester.
Dr. Tab. Mr. Torres. And six members of the board present.
Thank you, Sheila. And whenever the others enter in, they can just let us know where they're joining from. Do we have any public comments?
Good evening, everyone. We do not have any public comment at this time, but we do have a second opportunity for public comment at the end of the meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. So, next order of business is Business Ops. We've got a few things to review today. First, we're going to start with, it looks like Sarah just indicated that she is here remotely. But we have Anya with the September 2021 Financial Review. Do we need to give a few more minutes to let people arrive? Did I start a little too soon?
Anya's here. She's just trying to get her mic to work.
Always the tech issues.
Good afternoon. Sorry about that. Apparently, I'm having bad luck with microphones this afternoon. So, this is mic number three or four at this point. We have the September financials for you. Recognize that September financials at this point in the year are very, very, very draft. So, this is the point in the year in which we just start to close out our year-end for fiscal year '21. So, a lot will be going on between now and the end of February for our state reporting, and then ultimately for our financial audit that you will all see later in the spring/summer. So, when we look at these, there's lots of things that will change between now and when these are presented as our final audit. But it does give you a quick glimpse as to what September looks like. And you can see revenue again is still quite a bit up from the prior year. You can see those quick jumps there, which are direct care wage payments that happened in last fiscal year. But even with those being direct care wage bumps from last fiscal year, our regular revenue at this point is that high anyway. So, that's because a couple of things. We're still seeing increased enrollment due to the pandemic and the emergency order, and no one coming off of Medicaid. And at this point, $2 of the $2.35 has been rolled into our rates. So, we will expect to see another set of rate certification letters from the department to roll in the remaining 35 cents. I think they said maybe in January we would see that. So, we will expect to see that, and then they'll catch up year-to-date on that probably in January or February. So, from a revenue perspective, we're in good shape. The emergency order being extended through the end of next year, as far as I know, does mean we will continue to see increased revenue because we will continue to get more people that qualify for either Medicaid or Healthy Michigan, and not falling off. So, that's definitely helpful from a revenue perspective, and obviously not something we count on long-term. So, this is a good time for us to be keeping an eye on that revenue and just doing what we can to rebuild some of the reserves we had to use in prior years. So, next slide. So, this slide ties directly to the previous one. This speaks to the number of eligible people, which is how we are paid. So, you can see the eligibility has continued to go up and is quite a bit above where we were at last fiscal year. And that really, again, is just because people can go on Medicaid or Healthy Michigan right now. They cannot fall off. So, we're going to continue to see that through this next fiscal year with the emergency order continuing. So, you can expect to see that trend continuing throughout fiscal year '22 as well. Okay, so this is assets. So, this is comparing year-over-year. So, because we are finally at September, this is looking at fiscal year '20 and fiscal year '21 September. So, it's year-to-date, but remember, the current year's numbers are very draft at this point. But the kind of glaring item there is that fiscal year '21 is so significantly higher than fiscal year '20, which is good because that's revenue. So, we did get quite a bit more income in this fiscal year. So, our cash and investments is up quite a bit. Our receivables is down right now. But again, that's going to change as we get ready to close out fiscal year '21 because we'll do accruals and things like that that will kind of reconcile anything we have outstanding versus anything that's outstanding to us. So, those numbers will get tweaked a bit. Other assets is roughly the same. And then capital assets does just go down slightly each month with our depreciation of any capital assets. So, looking at liabilities, you can see our liabilities are down significantly from last fiscal year. Again, same thing, as we close out the year, you'll see those hop up a bit as we do accruals for anything that was that happened during the fiscal year but isn't going to get paid until after the fiscal year ended. So, during our year-end processes, we make all of those accruals just so that when we do go through our audit, all of the statements represent everything that really occurred during the fiscal year, even if we didn't necessarily pay it during the year. And that's because we have to follow accrual-based accounting. So, we don't, 98% of the revenue we get in is on an accrual basis. So, it isn't necessarily recorded in the month or the year it was received, more so in the month or the year it was earned. Due to, oh, sorry, I wasn't done. I paused longer than I should have. Due to state is down a bit, and so that's just going back. I believe we just made a payment to the state for our local match. So, this is just different items that are due to the state. Could have been also the state facilities, the local match portion of that that gets paid. Employee payables is not much different than it was prior month. And then long-term debt, again, has gone down just as it relates to monthly payments on our long-term notes. So, net position, total assets are up compared last year to this year. So, that's a good thing. Total liabilities are down. So, therefore, our net position has gone up. So, that's good news, as that's not always the news I bring to the board. So, we'll be closing out the year on a positive note. And my hope is to be able to put some revenue back into our Medicaid ISF for future years. And with that, oh, I have revenue comparison. So, this is a revenue comparison from last month to this month. So, you can see it's up slightly from a Medicaid perspective. And that really just has to do with the the rate adjustments that were done for this fiscal year and then anybody that was added to the Medicaid enrollment. General fund is slightly less than last month. And county funds are exactly the same, and then all other is down just a bit. Expense comparison, you can see the administration is roughly flat there. And provider network is creeping up there. And that's a good thing because that is the backlog of direct care wage payments and things like that. Just based on the methodology, the way we did it, basically, the cost had to be incurred, and then we reimbursed it. So, this is a lot of that getting caught up. And so, we did change that for fiscal year '22 in that the direct care wage funding is rolled into the rates for most providers. So, that will get them the money faster and hopefully make that process a bit more efficient going forward. Grants is roughly the same as last month, and then all other, again, roughly the same. So, total revenue is up compared to last month to about $397 million. Total expenses up as well at $363 million. So, net income being up as well from last month, closing out the fiscal year. Our top 15 paid providers this month with their amounts. And that should be about it. So, with that, I will take any questions. Very exciting.
Go ahead, Hadas.
Hi. Well, thank you, Anya. That was good. Now, so it's pretty much, that's the year, right?
Yep. Yeah, but like I said, it's very draft at this point, just because we're just starting our year-end processes.
Sure. So, what is the process of figuring out how much money you put away for Medicaid? And who sits on, like, the decision-making? You know, what steps do you take to figure that out?
So, it's not really a decision-making process. It's really just what do we end up left with after all of our expenses are incurred from a Medicaid perspective? So, fund sources, that reconciliation process is what we go through at the year-end. So, it's based on a person's eligibility and the services they receive. So, once we go through and cost all of that, anything that can be expensed to Medicaid is. So, then what we put away just ends up being the difference between what revenue and expenses were. It's really not a decision point. It's really just the mathematical equation of revenue versus expenses.
Okay. And so, does Medicaid, because most of this is federal funds, do they have a limit to the amount that you can put away? Or, you know, what's that?
Yep.
If there is one.
So, our contract with the department has, we are in a shared risk model with the department, and we are allowed to keep up to 7.5% of our current year revenues in a Medicaid savings account. So, we don't have any in the Medicaid savings account right now, other than about $300,000. So, we've got plenty of room to put some money back away. And that's primarily because in '18 and '19, we did utilize our reserves to fund services.
And then later with that 7.5%, what is, what is that funding supposed to be utilized for? Future Medicaid services that, I'm just answering my own question. I'm just not sure.
Yep, you're right. So, what happens is we're allowed to hold that amount of reserves to use when our funding is down. So, if you recall, in '18 and '19, when we had those deficit years, we used that funding to cover those deficits. So, that is the intent of that allowable risk reserve. If we were, if we were not a shared risk arrangement with the state, we wouldn't be allowed to keep that. Or if we were full risk, we would be allowed to keep whatever we wanted. So, or whatever we were able to keep. But this is really a shared risk situation where we are liable for the first 7.5%. And then after that, the state's liable.
Okay. And then one final question. So, the agreement with the 7.5%, even though it's mostly federal Medicaid dollars, the relationship is with the state?
Yes, because it's through the PIHP contract with the state.
Okay. And there's no limitation to how long with the state we can keep those funds?
Nope. The only limitation is the amount.
Of the 7.5%?
Yep.
Approximately, it's about $300 million? Is that the total amount? What's the number?
No. So, it's 7.5% of the current year's Medicaid revenue.
And what was our Medicaid revenue for this past year?
So, I think our Medicaid revenue was roughly $280 million off the top of my head this year. So, we would be allowed to keep up to 7.5% of that.
If we had it. Okay, great. Thank you so much.
And we won't, we won't reach that amount this year. I would love to have a maxed-out ISF next year, but it won't be this year for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Don't see any online.
Hey, thank you, Anya.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so moving on. Edna White, our Director of HR, she's going to review the OCHN Employee Benefits Summary. And these next items, these are additional contractual obligations to be reviewed by the board. And, you know, Sheila, Jonathan, if you guys could correct me if I'm wrong, we determined too that these items will be voted on by the Business Ops Committee to determine if it will move to the board meeting for full board approval after these are presented.
That's correct.
Thank you. Okay, Edna, go ahead.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for having me present to you today. This is my third time this year presenting on OCHN Employee Benefits. The two prior presentations were a general overview of our employee benefits in April. And in September, I also did an update on our benefit expenses. And we did an opt-out request, of which the board approved, so that our employees did not have to comply with the mandates of Public Act 152. Today, I will provide up-to-date expense reports and formally request approval of our benefit plan for the 2022 calendar year. Next slide, please. The data that I provide will be relative to our year-to-date expenses, and that is calendar year-to-date expenses. And it's current as of September 30th, 2021, which is the last month for which we have claims data. The employee census at that time was 191 staff. And of those staff, we had 175 full-time employees who were enrolled in our healthcare plans, including their dependents. We cover 410 individuals. The majority of our staff has selected family coverage, followed by 63 staff who selected single coverage, and we had 42 staff who were enrolled in two-person coverage. And that can be an employee plus spouse, or an employee and one child dependent. Next slide, please. Our employees may choose from two Blue Cross plans, or they may choose to opt out of our coverage as well. We have a standalone telemedicine platform that we also will allow our employees to use. But that's not insurance. That's a standalone service that we allow our employees to use. As far as the medical plan choices, we have an HMO plan with Blue Cross or a PPO plan. The HMO plan requires the selection of one primary care physician with a defined network of specialist providers. The PPO plan offers a wider network selection as individuals may choose to visit any participating Blue Cross/Blue Shield of Michigan provider. We also offer our staff dental vision and coverage for life, accidental death and dismemberment, and short- and long-term disability coverage. Next slide. During the September presentation, I described our relationship with Assured Partners. Assured Partners is a benefits consulting firm. They're located in Wyandotte. And they administer the day-to-day transactions for our staff. And they also bid out our group coverage on an annual basis so that we can get market-based quotes for our plan design and for our coverage. Members of the OCHN executive team recently met with the staff from Assured Partners on October 18th, and we were able to review all of the bid submissions. We also discussed claims and utilization data that they were able to provide for us for this current year. Next slide, please. In terms of our current plan design, I described the two Blue Cross plans. But for those of you who may not have been aware, we do have a self-funded health reimbursement account and a self-funded prescription drug account. Let's see here. With the plan design that we have, the health reimbursement account is a self-funded OCHN plan that pays for in-network deductibles and coinsurance. And the health reimbursement account is applicable to both the PPO plan and the HMO plan. We have maintained a standalone prescription drug plan. It is self-funded. Our employees are able to select from a variety of generics. We have a preferred formulary plan, which we work with the pharmacy benefit provider to design. And there is a higher cost if staff or their covered dependents choose drugs that are not on the preferred formulary. And then I have the next slide, please. So, what you're looking at is the slide that was shared with you back when I did the September, the September presentation. And that had information that was current as of, no, information that was current as of July. The next slide will have information that is current as of September 30th. So, if we can look at that, please. So, so far in 2021, we're starting to see an increase in visits to provider offices and healthcare providers in general. This is attributed to the trend for people nationwide to resume preventive and elective procedures that may have been put on hold due to the pandemic. Expenses were down overall in 2020 as compared to 2019, and they're starting to rebound. If the current trend holds, we expect our overall healthcare expenses to come in at $2,971,420. Can we have the next slide, please? This slide represents the value that our benefits and our work-life balance structure has for our employees. And this was reflected in an independent survey conducted by the Great Places to Work Organization. That's the group that sponsors the annual Fortune 100 Great Places to Work report that comes out. So, what you're looking at, those numbers, 93% of our staff either strongly agreed or agreed with the statement that we have special and unique benefits here. And 92% of staff responded strongly or agreed with the statement that people are encouraged to balance their work-life and their personal life here. So, we take great pride in that outcome. Next slide, please. So, we wanted to let you know what our next steps are. We were able to review the data, and from the reports that were received, we decided to continue our Blue Cross plan design. We did have a slight rate increase of 6.2%, which is going to account for approximately $180,000 for the premium portion of our plan design. After meeting with Assured Partners and reviewing our administrative budget for the year, we proposed no changes to our current plan structure and no additional cost share for our staff for the upcoming plan year. We did plan for a potential rate increase within our administrative budget. Considering the current labor market and economic trends that we are seeing, we felt it was prudent to maintain a level of economic stability for our employees as we move through this period of uncertainty. So, with that in mind, we are respectfully requesting that the Business Operations Committee to call for a full board approval of our benefit plan. With this approval, we will be able to proceed with rolling out the open enrollment structure for next year. And the board can expect that the Human Resources Team and the Executive Team will continue to monitor costs and utilization throughout the year and to provide periodic updates to keep this board informed of the role our plan design has in attracting and retaining qualified staff. So, that is it for this presentation, and I am prepared to take any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Edna. Are there any Business Ops Board members who have questions? Don't see any online. I can't tell if there are any in the room.
There's no hands in the room.
Okay. So, I think the next step then is for the Business Ops members to vote on whether or not we will move this to the full board. Do you have a hand raised? Jonathan?
Yes, Serena. This is Jonathan. So, I'm not on your Business Ops Board, but I know that other members from our board are also allowed to ask questions, even if your committee is going to vote this in or out of committee.
Thank you for clarifying that. Any other board members that have questions? Yes, Jonathan?
Oh, I'm lowering my hand now.
Oh, okay. Okay, seeing none. For our Business Ops, I'm looking for a motion to... Oh, thank you.
I didn't realize. My hand is up. I'm trying to put it down. Is this, no, my hands are up. Sorry. I have no questions. I'll make a motion to move forward.
Mr. Cowan has a... We need a motion.
His mic's not on. Sorry, is there discussion going on in the room? We just can't hear.
I'm sorry. We're trying to get his mic to work.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. We need a redo? Okay. I am on the Business Ops Committee, and I will make a motion to adopt the employee benefit plan. I put it before the full board.
Correct. Thank you. Okay. Do we have a second?
I second it. I'm on the Business Ops Committee. It's Hadas.
Thank you, Hadas. Okay, so, motion by Mr. Cowan and a second by Hadas. Does this require a roll call vote?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
So, I'll go. Mr. Furman?
Yes.
Dr. Hans? Mr. Torres?
Yes.
Dr. Hans, are you in the meeting?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you.
In Oakland County.
Thank you. Mr. Torres? Ms. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Cowan?
Yes.
Ms. Namie Dyer?
Yes.
Okay, so, motion carries?
Motion carries.
Thank you. And Jonathan, do you have a question?
I just want to make a quick statement, just one that I am in attendance. I'm in Oakland County, as I missed the roll call earlier. And that the other is, because I do have what may be conceived, perceived as a conflict of interest, I will not be voting on this either way at the board meeting next week.
Okay, thank you for letting us know. All right.
I have a question? I have a question. This is Edna. We do have, just based on the timeline and the logistics with Blue Cross in terms of having everything up and ready to go by January 1st, I'd like to ask if this board would approve us to get started on the open enrollment tomorrow? If so, we would, excuse me, open enrollment this week, forgive me. And if so, would the board be okay with having a vote today? Or...
Help me. What was the question?
So, is the question to see if now the full board will go ahead and take a vote? So is the question to see if now the full board will go ahead and take a vote?
Okay, this is Edna. The question is, would we be able to move forward with open enrollment presentation and materials to staff this week? And there would need to be a vote today? Or if you have the vote at the general board meeting, would this board be okay with us moving forward with open enrollment presentations and materials to staff starting this week? And that request would be due to just the length of time it takes Blue Cross to draw up the formal agreement.
I might have to defer to either Jonathan or Kalana, if she's present, if that is something that we are able to do.
Okay, this is Jonathan. I know that a full board is typically done at a board meeting. I think this is on the agenda for next week's board meeting, which is scheduled for the 16th. I think we've been through this before where, you know, an action like this of having open enrollment identifies your employees as committing to a plan, although it doesn't close your open enrollment period. I know that until, you know, two weeks or three weeks from now. So the question I would have is, and we don't, I don't think Kalana's at this call, but is, back to you, what happens if the board chooses to wait until Tuesday's meeting, Edna? Are you looking to move ahead with just getting the contract in place with Blue Cross? Or are you looking to actually start open enrollment after the 16th? Or before the 16th, I mean?
We do have some cushion in terms of time. We, you know, with the holiday season, you know, usually, you know, there's quite a bit of time lag that occurs with working with Blue Cross on getting the formal administrative services agreement. We won't know the actual amount that we will be spending coming into the next year, so we only have estimates that we can work with. The contracts that we get from Blue Cross allow for the administration of the benefit plan. So while the costs are variable, the actual contract documents that we get from Blue Cross will allow for that administration. And the timeline that Blue Cross has for submitting those documents can vary wildly. You know, if we're lucky, we can have them at some point in November. Sometimes we get them as late as December. So what we're looking to do is to make sure that we have enough time to present information to our staff and to collect their enrollment data so that everything can be up and running by January 1st.
Okay, so...
Did that answer your question?
No, but that's okay. You've at least explained the process you go through and some of the aspects. All right, so you still have to go to Blue Cross and let them know whether we've said officially yes or no, right?
Correct.
Okay, so at this point, you've got a committee that has voted to approve it to come out of committee for the full board's vote. I don't think that they, I don't think their vote said that yes, they're in support of it, or no, they're not. It's just to move it out of committee for approval. I know that you can take that information to Blue Cross and tell them that you're in the process. You'll have, you'll have a decision on the 16th, more than likely, which means that you could tell them after hours or first thing on the 17th, that is a yes or a no. And that's about all I can tell you at this, at this point. If you choose to go forward with open enrollment, you probably have to be able to share with the employees what their monthly, you know, or what their payroll cost, you know, their premium share will be, even if you don't know the total price. So that assumes that the board does approve this. If they don't, you'll have to go back to the drawing board for another healthcare plan or a tweak to what you have.
We do move as quickly as we can to get the data so that it can be presented to the board, but we are, you know, required to wait until we get the quote data, and we didn't have that information until October.
Okay, so here's the other thing. Normally, we don't vote at committee of the whole for a full board motion. I haven't looked to see if we have a quorum. I assume we do. And I would leave it to someone on the board to make a motion if they wanted to, to have us vote at this meeting.
Hadass, it looks like you had a question?
Um, yeah, no, I'm okay with making a motion to vote on the, on this now as the board, since we do have a quorum. But I also want to make, and maybe it's separate, a motion that, since this takes place every year, that in the month of November, we're aware that we can't have our board meeting so late in the month, because then it's not really conducive to educate all the employees of Oakland on the healthcare. So in order, if we're doing this, I just think in the month of November, we should be having our board meeting and committee of the whole at a different time. So they're sort of two different things, but Jonathan, you can comment.
I, I agree with you that some things have to be accelerated. So perhaps it is acceptable to have this vote now. I can remember a board study session a month ago that the board voted to approve a state contract. So it's not out of order to have that vote. It's just not something we typically do. But, you know, we approved a contract at a study session because we had a quorum. If this board decides to make a motion and take a vote, you could do that at this, at this meeting. I don't think there's anything that's, it's, it's not out of the realm. This is official open meetings act, meeting. So like I said, I don't have any heartburn over it, but I can't say either way from a, from a, from this specific decision, because I have to recluse myself because I work for Blue Cross.
This is Sarah Guadalupe. I'll second Hadass's motion to take the board vote tonight.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. Will this require a roll call or...
I think you probably want to ask for discussion first, and then if there, once that's done, then you can call a roll call.
Any discussion from the board members?
Dr. Taub has a...
Um, yeah, this is Steve Taub. What I recall from our present bylaws and Robert's rules, even though it's customary that we vote on things at board meetings, I think our bylaws say, I have a copy here, and Kalana was going to speak too, but before the motion was made, but I think we've done it, we've done it often in the past, not most of the time. Most of the time, we vote on things at board meetings. But anytime you have a quorum, according to Robert's rules, you can have a vote. And I don't know, the motion we have now to have the vote at this meeting rather than the board meeting, you wouldn't even need that. You could just go ahead and make a motion to approve it. We have a quorum. And if people didn't want to do it, they would vote no.
Well, it's not on today's agenda. That's why there's a motion, I think.
Thanks, Sarah. Any other discussion?
This is Sheila. Ms. Newman has her hand up.
I was late for roll call. I just want to identify that I am present in the room in Troy.
Okay, if there's no other discussion, then Sheila, can we do the roll call?
Um, Ms. Ali is in the room and has...
Great.
I just want, this is Kalana Ali, Chief Legal Officer for OCHN. If I may, I wanted to confirm that we are voting on a motion that was made to basically amend and allow for a full vote by the entire board. Although this isn't necessarily, and I want to put up air quotes, the normal way of doing things, if the board so in its power or discretion decides that they would like to take a vote on this matter today, they can so do it. However, it's not on the agenda. And so this motion, we need to allow for full discussion and vetting by the entire board itself. So, and I'm not sure, and I won't speak about whether or not the other parties or persons on this board have had opportunity to fully vet the information before it's coming out of committee. So I'll leave that there, understanding that the motion has been made by the appropriate parties on the board.
Thank you so much, Kalana. Does anybody else want to? Yes, Jonathan?
I just wanted to say that I believe that the committee did vote to take it out of committee. So this is a motion that the roll call is on, is to essentially modify the agenda and vote on this motion to approve the Blue Cross Blue Shield or Healthcare Benefit Package. I'm just questioning that.
So this motion was to actually take it out and, or to actually vote on it, we still have to vote on it separately? So there's going to have to be two, there's going to have to be another motion for that as well, for the actual approval, right? Is, I'm not sure if that's what you were asking, Jonathan?
Yeah, so this is a motion not to approve it. This is just to essentially put it on the agenda to vote on it. Okay.
Correct.
Does that help everyone? I hope so. And I'm going on mute.
All right, someone else has their hand raised. Sorry, I can't see who it is. John Paul?
Uh, yeah, it should be me. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, I agree with a lot of what's been said. I came in a little late, so this is John Paul Torres, attending from Detroit via virtual. But I do want to add to the fact that the point of the study sessions are for us to prep us for the full board meeting so that we have all of the information so that we can make informed votes at those board meetings. But on occasion, from time to time, these things will happen where we'll have to take a vote outside of a board meeting. We have done it in the past, it's been said. But I agree with the idea that we should always, though, move forward with trying to hold these votes during normal scheduled board meetings when they're slated to be on the agenda.
Thank you, Mrs. Torres. Does anybody else have any other comments or questions before we move on? Ms. Newman has her hand up.
I just want to say I was late to this meeting. I did not hear Edna's presentation, but we did get information prior to this meeting in our board packet. So I'm satisfied with the vote.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we had a motion and a second to amend the agenda and include the benefits package to be voted on for full board approval during this meeting. So if there's no other discussion, we can move on to roll call, vote?
Hi, this is Sheila. I don't see any hands up here or in the chat, so I'll move on to roll call vote. Ms. Bernard?
Yes, I approve the motion. Thank you.
Mr. Furman?
Yes.
Dr. Guadalupe? Dr. Hans?
Yes.
Mr. Landsman?
Think I can vote yes on this.
Can I just get clarification? Is he abstaining from, are you abstaining from this package approval or...
I, you know what, I think I need to abstain from anything related to this vote. So I'm going to abstain, okay?
Okay, thank you. Ms. Newman?
Yes.
Mr. Cowan?
Yes.
I think you're on mute, Ms. Root. Dr. Taub?
Yes.
Mr. Torres? Ms. Namie Dyer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you, Sheila. So now that we have moved to, presented for full board approval, do we have a motion to approve the OCHN benefit package as Edna had presented?
Ms. Newman has her hand up.
Yes, Ms. Newman?
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we approve the Blue Cross Blue Shield Benefit Package for OCHN staff.
Thank you. Hadass, can you have your hand up?
I'll second it.
Thank you.
We have no hands up in the room. I'm not seeing any hands up.
I don't see any online. Okay, so there's no additional discussion. Can we move to the roll call?
Ms. Bernard? Mr. Furman?
Yes.
Dr. Guadalupe? Dr. Hans?
Yes.
Mr. Landsman?
Abstain.
Ms. Newman?
Yes.
Mr. Cowan?
Yes.
Ms. Root? Dr. Taub?
Yes.
Mr. Torres?
Yes.
Ms. Namie Dyer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, and it looks like Christina did type in that her vote was yes as well, just for the record. Okay, thank you, everybody, for all of your input and Ms. Ali for giving us clarification and everybody's help throughout this out of the ordinary process. We appreciate it. So moving on, it looks like Mr. Franklin has another contract recommendation for board approval. This is going to be, again, for the Business Ops Committee to recommend this contract to move into full board approval during the board meeting. And this is for the, I don't know if I'm pronouncing this correctly, but the Di Maria Building Company. So, Mr. Franklin, whenever you are ready.
Yes, we're seeking approval to our contract to the Di Maria Building Company. Proposed contract amount, one, $1,498,000, not to exceed 1.6 million. This bid process took place with about four bidders total. It's a one-term renovation project. We ordered it to Di Maria. I was not part of the RFP process. I have with me Mark Dugood, who was part of the, he's a facility manager, and he was part of the RFP. And so we just wanted to make sure that we did go through the vetting process. There were four bidders. We invited three bidders back for a personal interview, and we went through the steps and procedures of the bid process, and Di Maria was our choice. This is a space for, is identified as the build-out for the Children's Crisis Center at the Resource and Crisis Center. And at this time, we're presenting as for approval for this contract.
I have a question. I see in the description, it says that OCHN pursued a grant to fund the operations of selected children's services. That is a grant specifically for the services and not anything to do with the actual...
for the services and not anything to do with the actual build-out contract being proposed.
That's correct, when we submitted the grant, um, um, they allowed eighty thousand dollars toward the build-out, but, um, most of the grant we received from SAMSSA is for five million dollars, it's a two-year grant, um, and that particularly is for the staffing and the, the staff and, um, salaries for the people that's going to, um, run the facility, and also for expenses as well, and so, the, the grant is for the salaries, the staff, and the expenses, uh, the build-out is something that we're, um, we're funding, um, we do have other options on the table that may allow additional, but right now, um, that's not guaranteed, so, uh, we, we need to move forward with this project because it is time-sensitive, um, there's a s- urgent need for children's services, and, um, I'm thankful that Oakland is able to meet that need, and we're looking for board support and approval to move forward with this project.
Okay, I saw a couple of hands, um, sorry, go ahead.
All right, so first, where's the building for the Children's Crisis Center, didn't say where it is?
Okay, so the building is located in, um, Pontiac, it's our Resource and Crisis Center, we currently, um, have services in the same building for our substance use, as well as, um, crisis residential units, and Oasis, which is run by one of our providers, um, this would be an additional service, uh, in the same facility in Oakland County, uh, at the Resource and Crisis Center, so it's at twelve hundred Pontiac, um, in that complex.
Okay, so who owns the building?
The building is owned by the county, um, it's, we entered into a twenty-year lease agreement, um, back in twenty twelve, um, and we're ten years into that, roughly ten years into the, uh, lease agreement, um, but...
Okay, so, these are tenant improvements, we're a tenant, we're improving their building to the tune of one point five million dollars.
That's correct.
Okay, so at the end of the lease, if we don't renew the lease or extend it, they get the benefit, what, I mean, it's thirty years from now, granted, I understand, but these are not, this is not our building, and we're a tenant, and these are tenant improvements, just, I just wanna get that right.
That's correct.
Okay, so, if, I had the same question about the grant, I read the same thing, grant to fund, so where's the money, is this a budgeted item? Where is it in the budget right now?
Okay, I'm glad Anya Eliason came, I was just about to call her up, unless she's here.
I know, I didn't mean to shoot the messenger, I'm just trying to get to the, you know, get to the bottom of, of what we're doing.
So, I, I'm gonna jump back a couple of steps, um, so, the, we did budget for this, for this expense in, in the current fiscal year budget, so in fiscal year twenty twenty-two...
Capital improvements?
There is a two million dollar line item for this particular initiative.
Okay.
Now, remember, build-out is cash upfront, but we depreciate over the length of the, the useful life.
Right.
So, while the expense for the actual build-out will be nowhere near that one point six million dollars this year, it will be a very small portion of that because we will depreciate it, however, the cash will go out for that, for the one point six, but yes, it is budgeted.
Well, okay, that's what I wanted to get to, 'cause I didn't know if you were gonna go bond for this, or cash it out, it's a small amount, I'm not sure you'd wanna bond for it anyways, okay, so, that gets to, to those questions, now, hold on, I gotta get... The second thing is on the process, just so I underst- just to understand it, so, based on the memo about the process, so, first, DeM- they, there was some kind of, was there some kind of scoring that was done between interviews and, uh, the written submittals that was done by the committee?
That's how we, uh, generally, that's how all of our, uh, RFP process occur, there's a scoring process.
So, I'm just gonna add on to that, Patrick, um, so, our, our, our RFP process is pretty prescribed, just because of the procurement rules we have to follow.
Mm-hmm.
So, there's a bid committee selected, that bid committee develops the questions, there's always representation from multiple areas that are applicable for that, for that particular bid, so that group not only helps with the questions, determines what the scoring will look like, sends it out, whatever bids come back in, those, those members all score individually, they discuss, and that, that whole process is run through our procurement process.
Okay, well, I, I was, I was assuming we followed the procurement process.
Yep.
But, because of the, I mean, there seemed to be a little, a few bumps on the road, not caused by us, but just because of the way the bidders bid, so, and you had to go back to a third addendum, so, you picked what was not the lowest bidder, and that's okay, I understand that, but what was the difference between the lowest price and this price that we're taking?
Seventy-eight thousand dollars.
Seventy-eight thousand, okay, I got it, and then, did somebody ask ACH Construction why they didn't submit a complete cost proposal? Did they, did they not feel there was enough information provided, or, I mean, there had to be a reason, they went through the process, and then they didn't submit a dollar amount, I just find that a little strange.
I'm allowed.
Mark Dugood, Facility Manager, yes, we asked ACH to present us a complete number, they said that they didn't have the time, the time, uh, to complete the number, to pull in their subcontractors.
Okay, no, that's understandable, I know how crazy things are, it's just that I know them to be a very reputable company in the public space, and I just was concerned that they, that they, you know, what was the reason, and if that's the reason, I can understand that, because everybody's getting a lot of bids, and they can't submit, uh, completed bids on everything, so...
Sure, we were, we were a little disappointed too, and so, um, we actually, um, uh, provided the second opportunity, because one of the other bidders didn't give us a complete bid as well, so...
Okay, all right, no, and, and I, I know of Di Maria, and, uh, if, if that's what the committee selected, that's fine, I just wanted to, uh, kinda get some issues clarified, and, so I understood exactly what was going on and where the building was, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cowan, um, Hadass, I saw you had your hand up before, do you still have a question?
Yeah, I have a few, so, first of all, thank you so much for the presentation and explaining this to us, um, when we go to vote on this for board approval, and prior to that, Anya, is it possible for you to show us where capital funding is in the line item, where this funding will become, you know, like, just the, wherever it is on the, um, budget?
So, I'm happy to share that with you, right, I mean, I know where it is, it's in the crisis line currently, we budgeted two million dollars, but like I said, it's, um, the a- actual expense from a, from a, an accounting perspective will be far less than that, the cash that goes out for this will be the full, whatever the expense was, one point six or so, um, but, so, the expense to hit our budget will be nowhere near the two million, um...
Yeah, no, and it's really not about the money, it's really more about visually seeing it in the budget, so, if you don't, I hear you, and I hear that there's a line item, but if you could just send out to the board, you know, that part of the budget, so we can see it?
Okay, sure.
The crisis line, two million, and the expenses, okay, um, and then, regarding the seventy-eight thousand dollars that you were just discussing, I don't have any documents, I don't think, that talk about that, so maybe in the room, do you guys have more information?
No, Hadass, it's the, um, it was in the board packet on Boardable, it's, um, called the RFP Details.
Yep, I saw that, great, okay, and then, um, what, and maybe it's in there, what was the timeline of building this, when their day starting?
If we got board approval, they can begin mid-December, and it's gonna take six months to complete.
Okay, and then, we don't really run the program, we have a provider that runs the program, what's the name of that provider?
So, that piece of the process is also under RFP currently, I believe Kim will be giving you an update, um, this evening, um, but that process is still outstanding.
Okay, and who currently is the provider in the Resource and Crisis Center now?
So, we have, um, currently Common Ground is the crisis provider that is currently in the Resource and Crisis Center.
So, Common Ground, and, and is Common Ground on the list for the RFP to do the children, or there's?
So, the, the RFP process requires us to send it out to all vendor, interested vendors, and if they chose to bid, they would have been on it, I, I was not part of that bid, and I don't believe that's, um, been awarded just yet.
Okay, so, can someone explain to me the logic of a different provider using the space, but us choosing to build it out, I mean, wouldn't we think that they would be the ones to say, we're the provider, this is what we need, like, where's the, why are we going this route?
This is Dana, um, the reason we did this is, one, we had an opportunity to apply for a grant, secondly, the current number of crisis stabilization beds for children are two, and Common Ground, um, is, it just doesn't meet the need of the community, so when this opportunity came along, what we did is we applied for the grant and we received it, and part of the grant process includes selecting a provider to provide those specialty services, so it's an expansion of what Common Ground does, but it's, in addition to some of the needs that we have across the state, and especially in Oakland County, to address the needs of children in crisis, so we would go with Common Ground if they actually, uh, submitted a proposal and were selected, so it, it's not that we excluded them, we just, and even, I don't know at this point, who, uh, proposed or, um, admitted a, submitted a proposal to us, and who was selected at this point, so we can't say whether or not Common Ground was a part of that process at this time.
Okay, thank you, so, no, I am a hundred percent supportive, it's wonderful thing that we're doing, and we should be paying for this, and, don't get me wrong, I'm just trying to understand if we're building it out and we're spending all this money, whoever the provider is, I would hope, would be involved with the actual discussion of the build-out, 'cause they would know the most of what would be needed at the Crisis Center, so, that's just, do we know when?
Kim just came up here.
Okay.
So, hi, it's Kim Flowers, uh, Chief Clinical Officer, so I've had a nice little fancy thing to talk to you about, but I guess I'll get right to the point. So, uh, right now, the letters have been, um, sent out and notified the bidders of who has received the contract, so the contract has been, um, awarded to New Oakland, uh, the other participants in the process who actually submitted proposals were, um, Taylor Special Care Services, as well as Common Ground. I'm waiting on questions, actually, so should I go ahead?
No. I just wanna say congratulations that that was done, and that sounds amazing, and, um, just the comment is that I feel that New Oakland, and maybe this is already happening, should be working really closely with the building company.
So, I, uh, agree with you, so we just sent the letters out today before this meeting, so that everyone would be made aware, because we knew there would be additional questions, I believe the intent would be to work with all parties, we're going to do some contract negotiations, and, um, once those are complete and all, I, I can't imagine that they wouldn't, um, if they had some certain concerns, be, um, a part of some of those decisions that we make, but please know that, um, uh, we had during this process, an opportunity for the, uh, those who were submitting bids, to come out to Common Ground and look, well, to come out to the Resource Center, take a look at what we were proposing, and to talk a little bit about, um, what, you know, what they were thinking, what we were thinking, so this was presented before we even received the bids, um, and it allowed that, the bidder the opportunity to determine whether they wanted to be part of the process.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, John Paul, I see you have your hand up, before I get to you, um, I know Christina just had posted in the chat, um, asking if it will be built as an accessible space, and how about trauma-informed care, um, and she did say that this might be more applicable to the interior designing, but to keep it in mind.
Thank you, we did include and answer the question about trauma-informed care during our process, so we are assured that, uh, those who were, that who was awarded the, um, the contract, uh, does perform that, um, care, and know that, um, they also are currently providing care in the community as part of our crisis, um, inter- intervention team, I'm sorry, and intensive crisis stabilization, mobile intensive crisis stabilization, and providing those services for children face-to-face, as well as telemedicine as necessary.
Okay, thank you so much, okay, Mr. Torres?
Thank you, um, a lot of my questions were actually answered in the past three to four minutes, so, but, um, just thinking out loud, what I'm understanding is, from what Dana said, we knew what we wanted, um, as far as the expansion went, uh, we put out the RFP, now we've identified the provider, and that provider will also be able to work with, um, the construction on any specifics or needs for that, uh, for stability, correct?
Uh, yeah, I can't see that we wouldn't offer them the opportunity to see where we're going with this, um, now that we've identified, it just took a little time, we didn't wanna wait to get the, um, the vendor, and then put the process into place for securing, uh, the team that would do the build-out, so we kinda did it simultaneously, but the intent is always to be sure that there's a collaborative effort, to be sure that what we make available is substantial and appropriate for the care that we intend to provide.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Newman has her hand up.
Thank you, Ms. Newman?
It may have been stated, I didn't see it, what's the capacity gonna be for the new Children's Crisis Unit?
We're working for ten beds to be made available, um, on the unit, um, it's, uh, it's gonna be a, a nice build-out, we're hoping that it would be sufficient, uh, right now, as you know, crisis stabilization, the work is to divert and to begin treatment right away, as opposed to sitting in the EDs and awaiting a bed, and, and all of that, we don't want anybody to have to be boarded in an ED, particularly children, uh, awaiting the need for crisis care services, so, um, but ten, you're welcome.
Are there any other questions?
I have no hands up in the room, this is Sheila.
Thank you, Sheila, okay, seeing no other questions, um, uh, do we have a motion for a business, from a Business Ops, um, board member to move to recommend this proposal to for, full board approval?
Mr. Cowan has his hand up.
Yeah, I'll, uh, I am a member of the, uh, committee, and I will move that we forward this to the, the board, full board for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Cowan, Hadass?
Hadass.
I second that.
I second that.
Okay, any discussion from any board member? Hearing none, um, shall we do a roll call vote?
Mr. Torres?
Uh, yes.
Yes. Dr. Hans?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Furman?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Cowan?
Yes.
Ms. Bernard?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Namie Dyer?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Sheila, okay, um, next order of business, um, we have the summary of findings, um, in the Classification and Total Compensation Study, and this is being presented by, um, Patrick Brecken, and Lauren Price, I believe.
Uh, hi, um, this is Edna, and I will, uh, do a brief, uh, introduction, and then, um, uh, give the, uh, representatives a chance to proceed with the presentation, and I am also joined by Anya, thank you for, uh, lending your expertise to this project, so, today it is our pleasure to introduce representatives from the Segal Group, this consulting firm was selected via competitive bid process to lead a compensation study to help OCHN revise its pay structure to meet an ever-more competitive labor market in the healthcare sector, while we had processes in place to benchmark individual positions on an ad hoc basis, it was important to conduct a comprehensive assessment across the entire organization to ensure all of our positions were priced competitively, and they were able to address any internal equity issues related to applicable job functions, educational, experience, training, certification, and licenser requirements, we had an internal group which met mostly on a weekly basis with the representatives from Segal, in addition to myself, we had our Chief Financial Officer, Anya Eliason, on the work group, our Controller, Patrick Franklin, was on the work group, as well as our HR Specialists, Glenda Witherspoon, and Jerry Lyons, so, with that background information, it is my pleasure to introduce our partners in this effort, Patrick Bracken, Vice President and Senior Consultant... Patrick Brecken, Vice President and Senior Consultant, along with Associate Lauren Price. And Patrick, please take it over from here.
Great, thank you, Edna. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for that great introduction. Again, Patrick Brecken with Segal. And just a quick overview of Segal, for those that may not know, we are a national human resources consulting firm. My group within Segal focuses exclusively on public sector and job classification compensation. We are here today to present a summary of our findings and recommendations and kind of talk with you about our process and methodology. Next slide, please. So for an agenda, we want to talk about, and I apologize, there's an echo. I'm trying to manage that. So there, we have study objections that we want to refresh your recollection of because you were part of that initial communication. Talk with you about how we did our work and what focus we applied, what our key findings and outcomes are. And then talk with you about the recommendations we've developed and take any questions. Next slide. So from a high level, the overall study objectives for this engagement were really two-pronged. The first was, the first was that we looked at the job functions that OCHN employees perform. And the goal was to ensure that the classification structure, so this is the job classification structure that OCHN, there is not an echo if someone's putting in the question. Thank you for fixing that. The job classification structure that OCHN uses to manage its workforce and the skills and duties that its employees perform, that that classification structure was up to date, was reflective of the varied roles that OCHN employees are asked to perform. And that it really helps to identify and document those key job characteristics, such as essential duties, minimum qualifications, certifications, that all get kind of embodied in the job descriptions that OCHN uses. Those job descriptions are really fundamental to an organization because that helps them identify what skills and talent they need. But also when they go to recruit, that they have updated job documentation to base those recruiting efforts off. And so the first kind of prong of this analysis really was to look at the classification structure. The second prong was to conduct a total compensation salary market assessment. And the goal of this component was to help quantify and assess how competitive, not only the pay ranges that OCHN maintains in its salary structure, but also the benefit offerings that they provide to employees. Next slide. So for a project overview of the entire engagement, we kind of broke down the process slide here into five, to five major pieces. So the first project initiation phase really was a data gathering phase and a kind of getting to know OCHN, understanding its policies and procedures, as well as some of the cultural elements that OCHN embodies. And this was important because as we moved to the classification analysis phase of the project, we invited all employees to fill out job description questionnaires that were somewhat lengthy and did require employees to provide a good amount of information. And we really applaud the effort for OCHN to encourage and give employees the time to fill out these questionnaires because that really served as the foundation for us to be able to do the classification structure review, look at the job functions, make sure that we think that there's appropriate titling structures as well as not an overlap or duplication of job roles. We also then, after doing the classification analysis, embarked on the total compensation assessment, which fundamentally was a custom survey that Segal prepared on behalf of OCHN. We worked with their, with the project team to identify what data sources would be appropriate for inclusion. And on the next couple of slides, my colleague Lauren Price will kind of walk through our methodology in more detail there. But the idea was to be able to collect relevant both compensation and benefit information so that we could better understand how competitive are OCHN's pay structures as well as their benefit offerings. We then kind of to tie all this together, worked with OCHN on developing a couple sets of recommendations for them to consider alternatives to the current state. And then worked with the project team to hone in on, I think, their preferred recommendation and then the implementation components of being able to migrate to that recommended structure and what that would mean for OCHN in terms of next steps. And then last, we're here today to talk about what we've done, what we found, and present our results to the committee. Next slide. So I did want to take a minute to talk about, this is kind of a framework slide to help those on the committee and listening in that maybe aren't as well-versed in human resources and compensation benchmarking, kind of how market data, and what we mean by this is compensation market data, the role it plays in decision-making for organizations. And we wanted to put this on a slide because we think it's important to kind of help bolt in the notion of using competitive assessments like these to help inform what changes to the salary structure OCHN should consider. And there's really kind of two reasons that we want, or we advise clients to think about it this way. The first is that market data is just kind of a starting point in decision-making. And the reason that it's a starting point is firstly, the market values that we are able to collect and benchmark OCHN against represent the value of the job, not the person that's in the job. And that's an important distinguishing point because what we're looking at is trying to devise a salary structure that is appropriate for OCHN, but it's not identifying, you know, where individual employee should be paid. Those decisions are very linked to incumbents' characteristics, such as skills, job experience, performance, and the like. The second reason it's really a starting point rather than a definitive answer is that the market values that we're collecting represent the value of the position as it exists in the labor market, right? Those other employers that we've been able to collect information is from, as well as other data sources, and not necessarily those to OCHN. So there may be a difference between OCHN's emphasis on certain functions relative to what other organizations place for the similar positions. And so this all kind of ties in together to make the broader point that when thinking about pay structure changes, there's a balance between internal value and external competitiveness. And using that framework, we kind of helped OCHN think about the process after we collected the information of how to synthesize that and make the recommendations that we have. And so with that, if we could go to the next slide, I think I'll turn it over to my colleague to talk about our market data collection methodology.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having us. To talk a little bit about Segal's methodology during this project, we used a two-sided approach to collect pay and benefits data, first consisting of a custom survey and then secondarily published surveys. Starting off with our custom survey, in partnership with the OCHN team, we designed a survey to gather pay and benefits data from OCHN's peer organizations, including the City of Troy, City of Detroit, Oakland County, Wayne County, Macomb County, and then also the State of Michigan. And then I'll talk about our geographic adjustments and data aging in just a second if we could go to the next slide. And then secondarily, for published surveys, we used six compensation and six benefit surveys to gather benefits and pay data using scope cuts that reflected healthcare organizations with relative revenue size in comparison to OCHN. So for the custom and published surveys, all data was geographically adjusted to Oakland County, Michigan, and then aged to September 1st using a 3% annual adjustment factor. These data adjustments allow for OCHN to not only have the most up-to-date information, but also to be able to compare that pay and benefits data to your geographic area. Next slide.
That's great. Thank you, thank you, Lauren, for that. And just to highlight, some of those methodological approaches that Lauren just outlined, those are very common for the studies that we do. So those aren't anything kind of new or different for OCHN. That's an approach that we use with virtually all clients when doing these kinds of studies. So with regard to key findings and outcomes, we broke this down into kind of the two major components of the project. So the first is the classification analysis. And what we found there is we reviewed all of the questionnaires that employees filled out. We helped OCHN develop some titling groups and job families that help with ensuring consistency when thinking about and evaluating positions across the organization and kind of creating the same ruler, if you will, that jobs are looked at. And that ruler kind of thinks about things like duties and responsibilities, but also the knowledge and skills and the minimum job requirements that employees need to have for those roles. And then secondly, we made sure that in the classification structure OCHN was moving forward with, that there were really clear distinguishing characteristics between job titles so that there wasn't any confusion about kind of where a job, where a job's duties kind of start and stop, that it was a little more clear in terms of defining those discrete roles, which helps management as well as employees kind of better understand their role within the organization. And then the second finding that we found for the total compensation salary market assessment, firstly, I just want to note across all of our data sources, we have about 280 individual market data points covering the job titles that we were able to survey, which were about 55 of the 100 or so job titles. And this was across seven peer organizations and then six industry surveys that Segal purchases licenses to, can use in engagements like this. And what we found on an overall basis is that when you look at the pay structure that OCHN has in place, that it is less competitive than the market average. It's about 81% of what we're seeing in terms of the average that's out there. Now, this is on an overall basis, so this is for all positions. So there are some positions that are market competitive, some positions that are above and some positions that are below. But when we think about this in aggregate, there is a gap between OCHN's current structure and the market average that we're seeing. Additionally, for those that are aware of kind of how OCHN sets up its compensation structure, it's very heavily focused on job title groupings. And so one of the recommendations that we made was to kind of think about a departure from that. And the last point I do want to make is that based on the sources that we were able to identify for the benefit comparisons, both the published survey information that we have and the custom data, the benefits that were offered by OCHN are well in line with market competitive levels. And I think even from the earlier presentation we saw today, that employees feel like the benefit programs are unique and helping kind of build out a competitive total compensation package. What we are really honing in on is that the pay structure itself seems to be below market competitive levels. And so if you go to the next slide, what we've been able to do is work with OCHN on developing a pay grade-based salary structure. So that departure from more of a job title grouping structure into a more commonly found pay grade structure where you have, you know, kind of grades 1 through X and they have established minimums, midpoints, and maximums. We developed that with OCHN's input and feedback. And we've been talking with OCHN about how then to migrate to that structure and what the implications of that would be. One of the benefits of adopting the pay grade structure is that we've created some more consistent percentage differentials between the pay grades and within the pay grades so that they have kind of a more consistent framework. And this can be really helpful from a competition administration perspective and, you know, things like promotion policies and the like because the structure's kind of more uniformly designed. And so at this point, OCHN is considering a phased implementation to the recommended salary structure that Segal developed for them. And I believe is in the process of kind of thinking about what next steps would be appropriate in terms of kind of moving in that direction. So with that, I'll pause and see if there's any questions from the committee.
Thank you, Patrick and Lauren. Are there any questions? Anybody in the room? I don't see any hands up virtually. This is Sheila. Ms. Newman has a hand up. Please, Ms. Newman.
I was just curious, with the difficulty that they're having in the job market right now with pay raising and people not taking the jobs that are available, did that have any impact on this study at all?
That's a great question. I think the short answer is no, partly because I think the data sources that we are able to reference haven't picked up that dynamic yet. My sense is that when the next, they usually do those surveys about once a year, that maybe next year's survey or whenever their timing cycle is, that we'll start to see some of that dynamic unfolding in the data. But just based off the timing of our study, I don't think much of that would have been picked up in the data.
Just for a follow-up, thank you for that because I was just thinking if the market, being what it is now, driving up the salaries, I would hate to have us base our salaries on this particular market because we don't know what's going to happen on the other side. So thank you for that. That's reassuring.
Absolutely.
Mr. Cowan has his hand up.
Well, first, are we going to be able to see a fuller version of the study? I know tonight's just a presentation. Are we going to, are we going to see that? Is the board going to see the study?
This is Edna. This is actually the outcome of the study. They did provide us with some benchmarking data and information on a lot of the job titles. But the outcome of the, all the research that they did and all of the data that they provided was to give us a framework for marking our positions to the grades that they gave us. And so we'll be working to finish that up in the next week or so.
Well, I understand that, but if we're going to use this as the basis to move forward with what some kind of, I forgot what it was called, phased-in approach, I'd like to know what it is. The reason why is because there was broad statements made, and I accept them for what they are, that we are at 81% competitive level. Well, that means some are higher, some are lower. So I'd like to know, are we lower on the lower end of the scale? Are we lower on the higher end of the scale at what I would call the more leadership positions? I think that's kind of some important information to know. If we're going to engage in increasing labor costs, because that's what this is all about in part. And, you know, I want to be as competitive as anyone, but I also want to know exactly what's the strategy and are we talking about it across the board? Or are we talking about being, you know, strategic in the changes that we make in order to retain employees? So that's why I've asked, there's got to be some more information because this is just a seven or eight, you know, slide presentation. And with all due respect to the people who are making it, I think they've done an excellent job in laying out the challenge. But I think as a board, I would like to have some more information.
Yep, so Segal was intended to present kind of the research and information they brought to us. And then the implementation piece and how we're going to do that is really more internal. So Segal was intended to just go through that part. We can give you a little more detail on what our plan is related to the overarching approach to getting to a closer to market level.
Right, okay. All right, then I look forward to seeing that at a later date as justification for moving forward on that. Please don't come with just, we're going to increase salaries. There's got to be some basis to it.
Of course.
Because I think we owe that to the public.
If I can add to that. We actually have a grade range and it shows you the minimum, the average, and the maximum for each class and category. So it's going to take a little So it's going to take a little bit of time to just organize that and they have provided that information. We just didn't want to overprovide in the detail of specific employees and their titles and cause confusion as we work through the process and come up with a comprehensive compensation strategy. So it'll take a course of a couple of years, but we do have a strategy in mind and we'll present that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Mr. Torres?
Well, thank you. Thanks for the presentation and the information that you provided for us. I think Mr. Cowan makes a great point about having more details and knowing specifically about, though we're at 81% in comparison to other organizations, where do we fall on that? Is certain, I know you did say certain positions were right in line, some probably were below, and maybe some may have been above, but it would be nice to know those details as we move forward. Two questions. The first question is how many, or what percentage do we know of the employees that participated in the lengthy process that you indicated, you know, filling out the information surveys and all of that to properly understand their positions? And then secondly, do we have a timeline or is it premature for when implementation of this would be? So when would these new categories or, well, I think we said we'll go to specific pay grades, when would this start? When could we potentially see this happening? Thank you.
This is Edna. I don't have the data on me right now, but just based on the return rate that we got from staff, by memory, I'd say we had about 70 to 75% of staff that actually took the time to complete the lengthy job description questionnaire. So I think we got a pretty decent return rate on that. Certainly, all the positions were represented. And I would say ideally, we would want to have the implementation plan ready to go by the end of the month.
Oh, okay. That's faster than I thought. Thank you.
Hey, Kadas had a question?
Yeah. First, thank you so much for your presentation. I think this board is the kind of board that likes to see, you know, the raw data also. We don't have to review it. We don't have to talk about it. But if possible, can you just put it in, you know, a document of the raw data in our board documents? And then in a month from now, after you've created, you know, what the plan is, you know, we can kind of compare it. So I guess I'm requesting to have that if possible. Thank you.
Hey, are there any other board member comments?
This is Sheila. Ms. Newman has her hand up.
Yes, please, Ms. Newman.
I'm just curious. A lot of times when we get presentations like this and we ask for additional information or some process or something to be changed, is there, is somebody compiling a list of all of this stuff and keeping track? Okay. Because I know, like, I had asked about, and I hope I'm not getting off topic now, but I just don't want things like this to get lost in the sauce and something as important as the compensation of our employees. I wouldn't want this to be seven, eight, nine months down the road. So that's why I'm asking the question, do we have a ticklish system? And is it any way that is marked highly important? You know, just so things don't fall through the cracks. Because I've asked for things and it seemed like it was months down the road before it came back around. I almost forgot I asked about it.
If I may. Again, after each board meeting, we have a list of action items and follow-up items. And either you'll see them in Boardable or you'll see them at the next report. Sheila and I tackle that list and make sure the appropriate people are responding so that things don't go down the road too far. And then also, they're also added to the board agendas for future presentations. So we want to make sure we capture all those questions. I take a lot of notes mentally and physically, but we do, that's really important in my position to make sure that any questions and concerns that come in front of this board that I get back to you and give you responses. So with the request for the raw data, we will definitely give you the numbers that we have. Again, I caution putting certain things in Boardable just so we can protect the, protect ourselves, but also making sure that employees aren't misinformed about certain things and cause, you know, confusion between employees as well.
Thank you, Dana. Dr. Hans?
Yes. Thank you, Dana. Yeah, because it's going to be implemented within a month or at least before the end of the year. If you could please include it in your director's report, either this month or next month, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Will do. Thank you.
Mr. Torres, did you have another question or was your hand up just from before?
Sorry, I left it up. I'll take it down.
No problem. Thank you. Any other board member comments? Okay, seeing none. Again, thank you so much, Patrick and Lauren. We really appreciate your presentation.
This is Edna. I just want to real quickly just say that it was a pleasure working with this team. We really appreciate their professionalism and their diligence with working with us and helping us to get as much information as we can so that we could make the important and necessary changes in this really tight labor market. So thanks to both of you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Okay, so moving on to policy management, Ms. Newman.
I need to take over the meeting at this time. Okay. Next up on our agenda, the FY '21 Satisfaction Outcome Report from Emsat, presented by Lindsay McCracken and Wendy Schiller.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm Wendy Schiller. I'm the manager of Quality Improvement, and I'm here presenting this evening with Lindsay McCracken. She's a quality analyst on our team. She really does the bulk of the work dealing with Michigan Consumer Evaluation Team. She oversees that survey process. So she'll be giving most of the presentation this evening. But before I turn it over to her, I wanted to give an overview of some of the fiscal year '21 surveys that Emsat has administered on our behalf. Next slide, please. So the main goal of our surveys is to assess people's experience with their services that they're receiving, and it helps us to identify areas that we need to work on and improve. So we partner with Emsat to do these surveys. And for those of you who were at the committee of the whole meeting last month, we talked a little more in detail about Emsat and the services that they provide for us. I have also made a request to the CEO of Emsat to come and speak to the board during a study session. We're hoping that will take place in December. We're trying to schedule that. I know there was a request from a board member to speak directly with some representatives of Emsat, so you can learn more from them directly. So Emsat administered three surveys in fiscal year '21, and we're going to talk about those this evening. The Experience of Care and Health Outcomes is what we refer to as the ECHO. This is the largest survey that they administer for us. The Complex Case Management Survey, and we're going to cover the OCHN Access Satisfaction Survey as well. Next slide, please. So our accrediting body, which is NCQA, the National Council on Quality Assurance, has set standards for us to assess member experience, and they group them into four domains. So the questions in the ECHO are grouped together in these four domains for us. There are questions that address service. This looks at the person's experience with the scope of the services that OCHN provides. The second domain we're going to look at is access, and this reviews how easily people can obtain services that they need. The third category is availability, and this measures the presence or absence of different services at convenient locations for people. And finally, we look at acceptability. And this domain assesses a person's experience with the fit of the practitioner they're working with and how they really meet their specific needs that are unique to them. Next slide. So the first survey that Lindsay is going to review is the ECHO. We've been administering this survey since 2018, when we started preparing for our NCQA accreditation. So the average number of people that we survey each year is between 600 to 800 individuals. And in fiscal year '21, we were able to have 725 people complete the survey of the 1,200 surveys that were mailed out to them. So the respondents to the surveys represent people from every population that we serve. And the people that are in the survey pool, in order to meet the criteria for the survey, must have been in services for 12 consecutive months or more. So we actually send Emsat the complete list of anyone who meets that criteria, and they pull the sample of the 1,200 individuals that will receive the questionnaire in the mail. So this survey adheres to a really strict data collection protocol, and that takes eight weeks to complete the process. So at the first day, Emsat mails out questionnaires and cover letters to the 1,200 individuals that they select that meet the criteria. On day seven of the process, they mail out reminder postcards to hope to prompt people to complete the questionnaire. And then they wait until day 15, where they begin the phone call process. So for those who hadn't responded to the written questionnaire, they start to reach out by phone to those individuals, and they make up to eight attempts to call the people. So this continues on until day 56, which is the conclusion of the survey process. So they stop their calls at that point. So in order for the survey to really be considered a valid survey result, we have to reach a 40% response rate from that 1,200. So we exceeded that. That would have been about 480 people, so we had 725 responses. So Emsat was very good about reaching out and calling people and getting people to complete the surveys. So I just want to mention that the data that Lindsay's going to be presenting this evening is from fiscal year '21. Some of the data for the ECHO, we received about two months later than we took the view from Emsat. They had a lot of challenges due to the pandemic with their own staffing. Also, they had a hard time getting people to complete the surveys, a little more difficult than usual. So they ended up actually having to do three rounds of the ECHO. So that 56-day process, they had to repeat three times. So it took a little longer. So I'm just saying that to explain that Lindsay's presentation is going to focus on the interventions that we had in place in fiscal year '21 and how that impacted the results for the fiscal year '21 surveys. We're still in the process of developing the interventions for fiscal year '22. So I wanted to mention that right off. So at this point, I will turn the presentation over to Lindsay, and she'll start to review some of the specific results.
Thanks, Wendy. And hi, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here this evening presenting these results to you. Can we go to the next slide, please? Great. So I want to start off by going over the demographic breakdown. There are a couple of questions at the beginning of the survey where we gather this information. So as you can see by the table, it assesses various demographic areas, including sex, race, whether the individual identifies as Hispanic or Latino, as well as the service population. So for sex, there was almost an even split between the number of respondents who identified as male or female. For race, the majority of respondents were white at 429, which is also 59% of the total responses. There were significantly more respondents indicating that they were not Hispanic or Latino at 668, as well as 26 choosing not to provide an answer. For the breakdown by service population, oh, I'm sorry, can you just go back really quick? The last one, thank you. For the breakdown by service population, most respondents were adults with SMI, followed by adults with an ADD. So the next four slides are going to go over those questions that pertain to the domains that Wendy was referring to. So the first is pertaining to service. Oh, and I wanted to mention, so each of these slides are going to go over what the question was, as well as the numerator, which is the total number of favorable responses, the denominator, or the total number of responses, and then the rate, the goal, and whether we met that goal or not. So you'll notice the goal is a little bit different for each question. So to begin for the service questions, these are areas that are related to, does someone want to say something? Okay, just want to make sure. So these are questions that are related to satisfaction from supports, counseling, and services. We did really well in this area. All five questions met the 90% performance target, which means that overall, clients are satisfied with the scope of services provided. The standard for this subgroup was increased in fiscal year '20. For, it used to be at 70%, but it exceeded for two years. So we were revised by TMG, which is our consultant for NCQA, to increase our targets when we meet those goals consecutively. So the goal was increased to 90%, and we thankfully exceeded that for all five of these questions. Can we go to the next slide, please? Thank you. The next area is pertaining to accessibility and how easy it is for clients to obtain services when they request them. This includes receiving timely intake appointments, how quickly individuals served received answers they need via telephone, and how long individuals must wait for appointments. So as you can see, three out of four of these questions did meet the goal, indicating that OCHI members are overall satisfied with the accessibility of services. Unfortunately, question five did not meet the 70% goal, but it was only by 1.11% that it was missed. Unfortunately, that is still not meeting goal. So due to it not meeting goal for fiscal year '21, this will be identified as an opportunity for improvement, meaning what Wendy had referred to is earlier, we develop interventions for areas that are not showing improvement and are not meeting goal. So that will be an area in which we develop interventions to hopefully increase performance improvement during fiscal year '22. The next area we will cover is availability, and this is assessing member experience with the presence or absence of the appropriate types of practitioners, providers, and services in convenient locations. Two out of the four questions in this domain did meet their goal. Questions 20 and 22 did not meet their goal. However, they did not meet the goal by less than 1%, similar to what we just went through. It was very, very close, but it still did not meet, unfortunately. So as with the question from accessibility, these are areas for opportunity, and therefore interventions will be developed to hopefully improve performance in fiscal year '22. Next slide. Okay, great. The final area is acceptability, and so this is assessing members' experience and fit with their behavioral health care provider. So two out of three of the areas did meet their goal. Question 29 did not by almost 5%. So this is definitely one of those areas that we are going to be focusing on during fiscal year '22 and developing interventions to improve performance. The next two slides are going to be going into more detail about the barriers and interventions that were identified based off of fiscal year '20 results and the action that was taken during fiscal year '21, so as what Wendy said, what we're going to be focusing on tonight. So this table is representing those three questions that did not meet goal from these four domains during the fiscal year '20 results. So the first is question number seven, which is how often did you get an appointment for services and supports you wanted as soon as you wanted? The barrier that was identified by OCHN was staff shortages and staff turnover, which which were hearing very consistently across, you know, the CMH world is that staff shortages are very important. The intervention that was developed was to increase staff and practitioner recruitment. The second area that was identified was question number 19. Did anyone talk to you about whether to include your family or friends in your counseling or treatment? The barrier that was identified was a lack of consistency in providing opportunities for family inclusion, especially during the pandemic. So for fiscal year 20 results, we know that there were going to be, there was a total change as the organization switched over to telemedicine. And so the clinical team felt like maybe their providers were not explaining in as much detail or offering as frequently to include family members or friends during their telemedicine sessions, or it was more difficult to try to get people into one meeting. So the intervention that was developed was for clinical discussions with the directors regarding the inclusion of natural supports in treatment planning documentation. The final question that was identified as an opportunity for improvement based off of fiscal year 20 results was question number 29, which we did see earlier as an area that will be focused on again during fiscal year 22. So that question is how many, how much were you helped by the counseling or treatment you got? The barrier identified was the effectiveness of services. And the intervention that was developed was to increase data analysis as a means of identifying opportunities for improving the effectiveness of services. Could we go to the next slide, please? So this is the same table. There's just two additional columns to signify. We want to highlight what the effectiveness of the interventions that were developed. So for question number seven, we see a rate increase from 80.79% to 91.31%, which is a really great increase. For question number 19, we also saw an increase from 59.17% to 74.09%. Unfortunately, for question number 29, that area did not show improvement. The score did drop from 74.83% to 70.24%. So that will definitely be an area based off of the interventions. We will continue to work on that during fiscal year 22 to ensure that we're improving performance. That concludes the results for the echo survey. The next area that I'm going to go over, so the second survey is the bi-annual complex case management survey. This is another survey that is administered by MSAT. So OCHN's voluntary complex case management program provides in-depth care coordination between individuals and their case manager, therapists, physicians, Medicaid health plan, palliative care, and caregivers. The program is designed to improve relationships between individuals, providers, and health plans, assist people in navigating the healthcare delivery system, promote self-care independence, and enhance quality of life by helping people achieve their overall health goals. Can we go to the next slide, please? Thank you. This slide depicts four questions from the case management survey, all with very favorable scoring. There were, it is noteworthy based off of, you can see there were four respondents. There were eight clients total who participated in the complex case management program during fiscal year 21. All eight were contacted by MSAT to participate in the survey, but only four were willing to complete it. So for these questions, question number one, my nurse case manager helped me get the right care, four strongly agreed. The complex case manager helped me better understand my medical conditions, four strongly agreed. How satisfied are you with the complex case manager treated you? Four said very satisfied. And how would I rate my overall satisfaction with the complex case management? Four said very satisfied. So even though the survey sample is very small, all four were very positive. The final survey that I'll be going over is the access system satisfaction survey. This is another survey that is administered by MSAT throughout the year. It assesses satisfaction of the individuals' experiences with all things related to access, such as with their access screening and time to intake appointment. On average, MSAT collects 100 to 200 responses per quarter. Individuals that are found eligible or not eligible for services are included. It's not just those individuals that were found eligible for services. The results of this survey are aggregated quarterly by MSAT and shared with the access team so that they're seeing the information and feedback that's being provided by the clients that are being surveyed. The access team reviews them in their staff meetings and highlight different points on what the survey is measuring. So the next three slides are going to show graphs demonstrating quantitative responses. Please note, this is year-to-date, so this will be the number of surveys that were collected from quarter one through quarter three during fiscal year 21. So the total number of respondents was 371. This graph is showing the breakdown by service population. So nearly half were adults with SMI, followed by children with an SED, SUD clients, children with an ADD, and then adults with an ADD. The graph on the top left, I'm trying to, I'm hoping you're seeing it the same way that I do and it's not mirrored at all. So figure 2.1.5 shows that 66% of clients were not placed on hold with the first person that they spoke to at access. Figure 2.2.1, which is funny, there's so many points. So on the top right indicates that 72.2% of clients received a summary of recipient rights with 7.8% responding that they did not. The final figure on the bottom right shows that 80.8% of clients were very pleased and 14.4% of clients were somewhat pleased with their experience with access. This is the final slide showing data from the surveys and in particular, the access system satisfaction survey. I apologize if it's kind of small. Figure 2.1.12 on the top left demonstrates nearly 100% of clients believe their intake process was fully and clearly explained. So that's really great. It was 99.4%. The next on the bottom left, figure 2.1.7, also had favorable responses with over 98% of respondents indicating they believed their access screener was easy to talk to, was a good listener, and treated them with respect. Figure 2.16 on the top right shows the length of time in which an individual waited to speak to the access screener after speaking with the first person from access. The majority of responses at 67.5% indicated they waited one to two days, followed by 19.2% indicating three to seven days. The final figure on the bottom right assessed the length of time between respondents' access screening and their intake appointment. This actually correlates to the state's performance indicator 2A. The standard is that individuals are to be seen within 14 days for their intake assessment from their date of request. A combined 81.2% of clients, so if we're adding up those first three little graph areas, indicated that they were seen in less than 14 days, so within that state standard. 13.2% of respondents either did not know or didn't remember, preferred not to answer. So that leaves only 5.6% indicating that they were seen in more than 14 days. That is it for the results I have from the echo, the case management survey, and then the access survey. Are there any questions for Wendy and I?
Yes, Dr. Hans?
Yes, thank you for your presentation. Surveys are important. And so I am very pleased that you showed this information to us. My question is about the echo survey. Your sample size seems to be quite small to me, considering the number of people that we serve. And now I do understand that it's based on only the people that are eligible for the survey. So could you please give us what percentage this represents of all the eligible people that we serve? And secondly, if you could break down by category, also what percentage do they represent?
Let me just say first of all that as part of the survey recommendations, it recommends that we actually don't do a larger sample because the lower number you have, the higher percentage response rate, because you can be very diligent in focusing on making calls and getting the response. So the survey, as it was developed, actually recommends to do a smaller size because then we had, you know, like, let's see, it was 60% response rate versus if you mail out a mass mailing, you'll get a very small return rate. So I think that's one of the reasons we kind of keep it smaller and we're able to get a more representative sample and a larger percentage. So the percentage of people that were eligible, I don't know if I know that number. I don't know how many records were in what we said at MSAT. We send them the entire sample and then they select the 1,200 from there.
Yeah.
And the number...
How do you, how do you determine eligibility? What is a criteria for eligibility? I mean, we serve thousands, tens of thousands of people in the county. And this number of 600 or 700 is minuscule. So what is the point of the survey if we are not including even one half of the population? So there is some, something needs to change. I'll give you, as a public person, I would give you my example that in the last 10 years, I have received only one survey. So I'm, I'm not saying maybe, maybe somebody else is helping my family member complete the survey. But, and I trust them because it's, it's a circle of support that, that helps this population. It's not just one person. They need a lot of help. So for any survey to be meaningful, participation of the population is important.
Well, for the criteria...
I don't know. I mean, I understand that you are working within the constraint of practicality and what is a state requires. But I think maybe this is the time for us as an organization to do some advocacy in terms of improving this methodology. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there, oh yeah, Hadass, you had...
Hi, thank you. Yeah, you did a great job explaining your surveys and I appreciate that very much. And I think this came up last year too, and you responded to the questions. I, I agree with Bajaya. I mean, if we don't know the percentage of people that specifically for the echo, you know, 1% out of, I think it's about 1%. I don't know, I didn't actually do it. Maybe it's 10%. What the percentage is that echo is supposed to be receiving, I think it is a good response, but we just, you know, did, we just hired someone to, a consultant, to figure out what the cost process is, you know, to pay our employees. Maybe we need a consultant to figure out when surveys are done, what percentage makes it effective to get the responses. I think that the fact that the second survey, the MCT, you said there's eight and they got four, that's great. We got 50%, you know, on that. And that's an amazing response. But it's a very small group. And then with access, the access intake, 371, I think we can pretty much look and figure out how many people on access, you know, how many people call. I don't know. No, actually, it's all the providers. So I don't know. I think it's, it's really important to our board members, here's the bottom line, to know what the percentage of people we are surveying. And that's the question to ask echo and, or someone should be able to figure it out. So I think, I think that's the main question. We're wondering, what is, is the survey really valuable? If it's 1%, 3%, 5%, I don't, I don't know exactly, but we need more education on surveys in general. The second thing I did want to bring up was, obviously, question number 29 in the echo is so, so important. And in addition to needing, I, I just feel like for the echo, it's required that you list one intervention, but it seems to me we should be coming up with three or four interventions because we kind of didn't do well in 2020. Obviously, there was a pandemic, so there's reasons for that. But it's such an important, you know, it's, it's our service that we're providing. So I just want to emphasize, I don't know whom you guys, I think, make the interventions, but is it always just one intervention or are there more than one for certain questions?
No, I mean, there's... Go ahead. No, there are oftentimes multiple interventions. I think just for the purpose of summarizing for the presentation, Lindsay kind of summarized it. But there's a more in-depth member experience report that is multiple pages that goes more in-depth about all those interventions. And, you know, we meet with different teams. We meet with the clinical team. We meet with due process. We meet with customer service and they're all part of that development of that member experience report and the interventions. So not only do we look at the data from the surveys, but we look at grievance data. We look at complaints data. We look at rights data. And that all gets pulled into that summary and when we, how we decide interventions. So just to give a little more information on that.
Well, they're doing, you know, you're doing so much and a lot of the things were very positive, which is wonderful. But maybe we can have, instead of a year from now, because I think it's once a year we see the surveys. Is it, how often do we see the surveys?
Yes, annually.
Once a year. Yeah. So maybe in six months, just, you know, just that one. If you can follow up with question number 29 on the echo, you know, what were the interventions? How is it going? Because that's really, really the bottom line of what we're trying to accomplish, you know? So I don't know. I would love some follow-up if that's possible. But thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you. And for the access survey, I want to point out too, we do survey 100% of people that agree to a survey. So that's the largest sample we'll get with that survey. So the only one we really have to kind of look into a little more and maybe work on would be the echo to see how we could accomplish that. So are there other questions? Okay.
This is Sheila. Sorry, Wendy. Ms. Newman has a question.
Okay, yes.
A question and a comment. One echo, we talked about staff turnover. That's something that I've been talking about pre-pandemic. And a lot of people didn't want to talk about the, the turnover. And I think just not, instead of just looking at the survey, looking at what's causing the dissatisfaction amongst the staff members because it's epidemic proportions now with, with the pandemic. People are jumping ship in ways you just wouldn't believe. And it's, and it does not lend itself for stability in the network. And it's, it's troubled me for a long time. And, and, and this isn't the first time it's come up. I, I, you know, to keep going year after year and not really getting to the bottom of why people aren't happy in their jobs, I think is something that's, that's critical. And, and I appreciate the survey and the survey information, but we need to go beyond just the survey and start really digging deep. Because I know some people are, are doing their own, working from home. Now that people can work from home, they're hanging out their own shingles. Why go through all of the things you have to go through with, working for an agency? When you can do the work, people want to do the work, but there, there's too many barriers for that happening. And my other question is, when people say that they're dissatisfied with their, with their therapy and with their services, that's huge. That's, that's all we have is our services. And, and are they given the reasons why they're dissatisfied with their services? And is it a particular provider? Is it all providers? These are some of the things that I think the board needs to hear. Because now, when we start talking about what's going on with, with our system and taking, you know, the Medicaid health plan is taking over, it's a lot of dissatisfaction in the streets. That's why I don't, I don't get high satisfaction numbers on surveys. But then when you talk to people in the streets, they're not happy. It's something wrong. I've been saying this for years. There's something wrong with, I'm not saying that MSAT is doing a bad job. I don't know what the problem is, but I've never understood the disconnect between the getting high scores on surveys and then people in the street are ready to rebel. You know, there's something wrong with that. So it really wasn't a question. Just a comment.
Appreciate that. Thank you. All right. Thank you, everyone, for your comments.
Thank you, everyone, for your comments. Thank you.
Mr. Torres has his hand up.
I'm sorry. Mr. Torres?
I'm sorry, my hand, my hand must have been still raised. I just took it down. Apologies.
Oh, okay, thank you.
No question.
Thank you.
Ms. Bernard has her hand up.
Yes, Ms. Bernard?
Dr. Hans, you still have your hand up? I'm just making sure you guys don't have any follow-up questions.
Sorry, no follow-up question.
Okay. Dr. Hand, Dr. Hans, you're on mute. You still have your hand up?
I'm sorry, I didn't have any follow-up question.
Thank you.
Well, good evening again. Kim Flowers, Chief Clinical Officer. Just giving you a little bit more, I guess, of what I've told you already. You already know the outcome of the CCSU, or Children's Crisis Stabilization Unit, and the update I was going to give today. Was just going to speak to a little bit of the very brief overview because this is, of course, we're not looking for approval. Just giving you the update of what occurred during the RFP process, just a bit. So you know, we were already seeking a service provider to provide the, our Children's Crisis Stabilization Services. As we all know, there are so many, well, there are many children who are held in the EDs for quite some time, requiring care and not receiving their care timely and/or efficiently. And particularly with the shortage, shortage of beds, we felt it necessary to create a place where that can happen and a place in the community where we can assure that access is a little bit more timely and services can be started more immediately. So we're asking, we've asked in our Crisis RFP for it to be operating 24/7 with immediate access to crisis intervention, emergency psychiatric evaluation, and medication services for youth and families experiencing mental health crises. The family-driven youth-guided services offered in the CCSU setting promotes the provision of evidence-based behavioral health care, as I think we talked about earlier, trauma-informed care included. The CCSU, which is the Crisis, Children's Crisis Stabilization Unit, RFP, was issued August 12th, 2021, with responses due September 14th, 2021. OCHN received three responses by RFP due date. The review committee consisted of six, excuse me, of seven. OCHN employees and an advocate, included in that count of seven, who's a member of the public. The review committee evaluated and scored both the written and verbal presentations provided by the bidders based on the criteria outlined in the RFP. The highest combined score of among, score among the bidders was, as I mentioned earlier, New Oakland, with a combined score of 74%. And then, as mentioned previously, at this time, the, the review committee has recommended that a contract be offered to New Oakland, subject to successful negotiation of the contract and Oakland County's approval of the vendor, as they are expected to provide services at the RCC site. Services are expected to start February 1st, 2022. Now, that's a brief overview. Are there questions or anything further that you'd like to know about the process?
This is Sheila. Ms. Newman has her hand up. Ms. Newman, you're running this part.
I'm sorry. Thank you for that, Ms. Flowers. You said that the services are going to start in February of 2022?
Well, that's what we had put out the bid. Yes, we like services and that's part of the grant. I know you heard earlier that the SAMSA grant was awarded to us to provide some of these services. And that was a condition of the grant, if I'm correct, that we would provide services by February 1, 22.
But the building won't be ready for six months?
Hold on, Dan.
All summer?
Correct. The building will not, we don't project that it would be ready at that time. So what we did do was go back to our proposers and ask if there was any opportunity or capacity for them to provide this service and some locations that they already have available to them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I did want to add too, we also have the ability to extend our startup date. And so we're waiting to see what our estimated start times from construction, as well as our provider, to be able to take advantage of that if we choose to.
Be part in the discussion, negotiation. Sure.
Just as a follow-up, this is something that is so desperately needed. I'm just glad that we're able to get that grant and be able to begin construction, especially children is-
Believe you me, I, we understand it. I can tell you, my family, I will honestly say, when I'm at home and I'm talking, I don't mention names, but my kids tell me, "We know, Mom, those children in the ED, you can't stand them." I said, "No, I cannot." So we have had several conversations about how to manage that when the crisis arrives, even now, and how we need, and who we can contact, what do we need to do? So we are happy as well to be able to push this forward and excited really to see how it's going to turn out. You know, we're believing that it will be a very useful resource and just happy to be able to be in the front of it. I don't know if we're in the front of it, but pushing it forward.
I don't know if we've given any thought to really educating our Ju, our justice, the, uh, system. I know we have Ju and Our Justice Navigator or embedded in the Ju and Our Justice system, but in Oakland County, we have far too many prosecutors and judges that feel that incarceration is the best way to provide mental health services to some of our children. So I'd like to see us being more proactive in educating them prior to the service even becoming available. So once it is available, they'll know this is where you send them and not to Children's Village.
Yeah, I agree. I think part of our partnering is a hospital liaison meeting where we have invited, though it's tough to get people to come in, we're working on increasing our numbers at that roundtable monthly, where we will talk about some of the barriers. This most recent meeting, we've had a few of our hospital providers at the table with us, and we've invited them all, so we're going to reach out again. But we've also had our, oh, what is she, she writes along with the, a partner in the community. Co-responder, right. Co-responders sit there as well. So the intent to go forward is to pull all of these folks together and, and form them of their resources. Because I don't think that everybody knows everything that we have available or the continuum of care that we have right now. And then hopefully during those meetings, we'll also be able to identify gaps. I know some things in the back of my head from experiences that we have recently had about, you know, where, how do we manage some other children who are, what I would say, stuck in the ED when hospitals are refusing to take them, whether it's acuity issues, what they consider, I don't know what they consider. I consider an acuity issue being in the hospital, not having the capacity to manage the care of the child. So, but maybe there are some gaps in service provision that we have. And we hoping that we'll be able to work with our partners in the community, be able to identify those and then send those forward to see if we can get some other resources available.
Will SUD be included in the services provided with crisis for children?
So, I will tell you that SUD, our provider, our new provider, it does have certification in those services. But onsite there, at this point, we weren't planning to provide. We would probably refer. I've been talking with Christina Nicholas regarding the availability of services for our children when this comes up and what are we doing and where do we go? I bet I'd find a few gaps there. But what we have available, we will coordinate care appropriately. Okay, thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Flowers.
Thank you, Ms. Flowers, and thank you, Malkaya, for running that portion. We'll move on to the additional general business. And I think next up, we should have the, yep, CEO update. So, Ms. Leszynski?
Thank you. Just a few really quick, brief updates. The first is great excitement to announce that I have identified a COO. And this person, Richard O. Aker, will start actually on Monday, November 15. So I will give a formal introduction and, and presentation to him at our next board meeting. So we're excited to have that position finally filled. The next update I have is just a quick review of the Fall Conference. And I wanted to thank our board members that were able to attend. Dr. Top, Dr. Guadalupe, Mr. Lansman, and Ms. Brute. All were present at the Fall Conference. Just a very, very quick highlight, I think, for that meeting was a presentation by Director Hertel, who is the Director of the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. And her focus, which in some ways is very much aligned, well, very much aligned with our strategic priorities, and that is to improve access in crisis, which we just heard one of the initiatives that we're working on. Also looking at integrated healthcare in terms of the CCVHCs, our Behavioral Health Homes, and now extending to the SUD Health Homes as well. The other issue that she brought up to the attention of us is the workforce issue, which we're all very familiar with in terms of direct care workers, direct service provider professionals, as well as clinical, master's-level clinicians, which Mrs. Newman brought up today as well. The final thing I'll tell you that she brought in is about children and having a system of care for children. And so part of our priorities really align with making sure that children are well-cared-for in crisis, but having a full continuum of care so that there are no gaps in services. And so we're actively looking at that and assessing our system to make sure that any gaps are filled as quickly as possible. And so we've done some low-hanging things, but we know there's some bigger projects that we need to have. And Ms. Flowers talked about the hospital liaison role that we have fielded, that will look at any person who is sort of needing assistance with transition. If we find that any child or adult is waiting in the ED or at the crisis center for more than 24 hours, we want to make sure that we're aware of that and we're actively engaged in assisting with getting that person transitioned out of the ED as quickly as possible. So that's just one thing that we're working on in response to what we consider our priorities, but also our needs. But also they align with the overall plan for the state. One of the things that is a little concerning is that this continued stance that the state is taking to be aggressively neutral and in the face of legislative, legislation that's coming up against us to privatize the system. It's a little scary. They talk a lot about the ARP dollars that are coming down the pipe and wanting ideas on what to do with those dollars. So it's a little concerning when you're asking for ideas, but you're also not saying that the system will not be privatized. So we cautiously present ideas and concept papers. We're making them shorter, so they actually need us to pull those things off. So we have comprehensive plans, believe me, and proposals that we submitted to the county and as well as to the state. We just want to make sure that we are setting ourselves up to be a part of that. And so again, I continually ask you to support us in our fight with the legislators. And I have to say, it's a fight now because it's coming very quickly down the pipe. So we did get the support of, and I'm going off my board study, I'm, I'm sorry, the Fall Conference update, but it's hard to not talk about these things when you're talking about what was presented at the Fall Conference. But we are getting a resolution from the Board of Commissioners, and that's due this week, I believe. So we're really excited to have the support of the Board of Commissioners. The next item I did want to cover as well is our November board study session. And I know Christine Burke actually sent out a notice to the board asking whether or not they would want to participate in a mental health listening session. And it's being hosted by Representative Cooper. I've been invited to speak at that listening session on this Thursday. I believe it's at 5:30? And I know, well, 5 o'clock, I believe, 5 to 6:30. And I know it hits right at the time of our board study session. So I wanted to get a sense from the board whether or not we actually wanted to, is that this week, Christine? That's correct. Okay, sorry. If we wanted to actually, next week? Okay. The 18th. I'm sorry, I'm confusing my weeks. I see my team back there looking like, what? But so it's next week. And I wanted to make sure that the board was aware of that. I think it's important that I presented that meeting because it is a way to advocate for the community mental health system, the public system. And I also wanted to have your support in that and also have you able to participate as much as possible. But I do know we also have Ben Boykin from our Legislative Consultants coming to present to this, this board as well. So I just wanted to put that out there and get any feedback from you. I know we have four board members that responded and at least three were in agreement with that plan. But I also would want to hear from the rest of the board about how they would like for me to proceed, but also for the board's overall participation in that listening session. It's going to be a virtual listening session. And the, the best thing about this particular one, it is, Representative Cooper represents Troy and Claussen. So this one really hits home, whereas the other ones were a little broader with the other representatives.
But isn't it a Zoom call?
It is a Zoom call, yeah. So it's a virtual platform. So that's all I have in terms of updates. And I can actually, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Colin.
Are you, are you looking for, you asked if we'd rather do that than the, the study session or part of?
I was going to say part of, but I know it's going to make another long meeting. So I just wanted to give-
Well, I'd, I'd be interested in that. I don't know how everybody else feels, but I think that would, you know, we could maybe reduce some of the items if they weren't critical that we might have put on the study session and replace it with this. I think that would be important.
And I know, like I said, Ben Boykin was scheduled to actually be on-site to meet with us. And so, I mean, of course, that's flexible. But the mental health listening session is one that's already scheduled and planned for, as well as this board study session, but-
Jonathan, you have a question or a comment?
Yes, I've already responded, saying I'd be interested in both. But I wonder if this is virtual, then maybe Ben's could also be virtual. So he doesn't make, have to make a run in from Lansing.
I think that's possible, for sure. So if we could get the, Christine, can you come up and give us the exact times if you're aware of them? Oh, you have them, okay.
Yeah, it's from 5 to 6:30. And then we would have capital service at 6:30. And the study session itself is scheduled from 6 to 8, I mean, 5 to 8.
So it would fit, it would fit within the time that we have set aside, but it would extend, it would probably be longer than most of our board sessions, study sessions have been. it would probably be longer than most of our board sessions, study sessions have been.
I have a question. Is, is Ben's presentation the only thing that's on?
Yes, it is.
And he was scheduled to speak for three hours?
No, he was scheduled to speak for an hour.
Oh, okay.
No ma'am.
Um, Ben, Ben was, um, it was probably an hour, but it was more of an open dialogue format because he typically presents right in front of the board at a cow, gets 15 minutes, and then it was more of an open dialogue about the privatization efforts.
More of a Q and A.
Yep.
Format. So, uh, whatever the board wishes, we can go in that direction. Just so that you know, I would be not present during that first hour, hour and a half.
So this is Jonathan. I think that if we're doing the first one with, uh, Representative Cooper, then we could go to our, our normal, um, teams meeting for the study session with Ben, following that. Um, it would be important, I, I'm, of course, this is my humble opinion, but it would be important to understand the impact of this recent election on, um, the possible legislation that's facing us. Um, and I know Ben would have that information. I'm not sure to what extent, uh, Representative Cooper would have. I'll go on mute.
Adam, leave your hand up.
Yes, I would be in favor of the, um, of a combination of the two, meaning the listening session and then the, um, the presentation with Ben, if at all possible. And if those two elements could both be virtual, I think that would be perfect.
Thanks, Adam. Uh, was it Mr. Cohen? I'm not sure who was trying to-
I was just thinking, if we've got the, the presentation, what if we started a little bit earlier at 4:30 and did that for an hour and then rolled right into, and then people could stay on as long as they could stay on for the listening session? Does that make sense?
I think they said the listening session starts at 5:00, not 5:30, though?
It's 5:00, yes.
Well, I know, but I'm just suggesting if we, you know, it, it just, it's going to be hard to do that afterwards. Uh, so just a thought.
Um, this is Sheila. Dr. Top has his hand up.
Um, I've corresponded back and forth with Representative Cooper, and he's against, uh, Senator Shurkey's bill as of right now in, in general principle. So I don't know how much, and I don't know how much influence you're going to have on a representative listening session if he can't see the people in front of him. I'm one of the four people that responded to Sheila, and I voted no to, you know, not to combine it with our study session. Because I don't know how effective a, you're trying to persuade a legislature to vote a certain way. Well, he already has an opinion, but secondly, he can't, he's just going to see what I'm seeing up on the screen there. That's not, I don't know, you know, if we all went to the hearing, that might influence people. But I don't know what influence would be on the other side of a team session or Zoom.
If, if I could just give a little bit of insight, the last, uh, listening session, do you remember, Ms. Newman, how many people were present? And really, it's a community invite, so it's not just focused on, on, um, it's various representatives and, uh, participants. Um, other district state reps are invited, state senators are invited, FQHCs, um, the CCBHCs, and, uh, and the individual citizens are also participating. So I understand what you're saying, but when we did it the first time, it was very engaging, and we had quite a few people listening in. So I thought it was something, at least we're getting the message out. One of the things I don't think we've done well is, um, and this is just as a system, um, it's just not talking about the good things we do and how we're working to fill those gaps without completely, uh, over, uh, turning the entire current system we have. And so I can understand exactly what you're saying, but I also think the value in this is just if we can inform people more, the more people we can inform, at least we can put the pressure on for, um, a decision not, to not, to oppose the Senate bills that are being pushed forward.
Um, this is Sheila, noting that Dana is also, um, on the panel.
Adam, did you have another comment or question?
I did not. I forgot to lower my hand, I'm sorry.
No problem. And then I think I see Hadas.
Yeah, I think it would be amazing if we could support Dana too, because she'll be speaking. And then, I don't know if it's really, we're there to, um, convince the senator of anything. Rather, it's more, uh, education either from all of us, or if there is Q and A, I mean, it's not going to take that long, but just more of an education as to what's going on and participating. Um, so anyway, I'm in support. I know it's going to be a very long meeting, but we've had a lot, you know, we're, we're getting used to them. Thank you.
This is Sheila. Ms. Newman has her hand up.
The format for these listening sessions are different. The Democrats have come together and they're going around the state asking specific questions of providers as well as people served by the system, and they're doing fact finding. So they're not asking, they're asking us questions to better help them, uh, develop a, an alternate plan to what, uh, the Whiteford and Shurkey bills are presenting. So it's not so much that we're trying to convince a particular, uh, senator or representative. They want to hear from us what's working, what's not working, what do we, what do we feel needs to be changed. Uh, I was on the panel, when Dana was on the panel on one of those previous, uh, listening tours, and it was very effective, very effective. So I, I for one did vote in favor of supporting Dana on this. I think it would be very beneficial to a lot of our board members to hear from other, uh, entities. There were people there from hospital systems, uh, Deb Brinson was on the panel at that time. I don't know if she's going to be again, but it is a, a, a good audience to, to dive into some of the, the issues that, um, are preventing us from being the best system that we can be right now and still be in support of keeping it a public system.
Did we want to, and I'm just offering a suggestion, maybe, um, do some kind of survey and to see if what Mr. Cohen is recommending, doing the part that Ben was going to present to us, maybe a half hour earlier? And I don't know what individual schedules are. I don't even know if Ben could actually do it a half hour earlier, but I'm assuming if he was going to drive here, he can use that drive time to, to talk to us before the listening session. And, and then that way, once we're done with the listening session, we can complete or end the board study session.
This is Sheila. Mr. Cohen has his hand up.
No, I think that's a great idea. Why don't you go ahead and do it, and we'll see where we end up for that Thursday.
So we'll have two options either way. Okay. What are we doing? I'm sorry. Okay, okay. And that's all I have for my updates. I'm sorry, it took a little longer than I anticipated. I don't know if anyone had any other questions.
Good discussion, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, yep, if nobody else has any other questions, we'll move on to other business. Um, so we have, uh, an update on the website redesign by Diana Bunsch.
I come prepared with paper. I, sometimes it's almost embarrassing as a CIO, but that's okay. Good evening, everyone. I'm here to give, uh, an update on our website timeline. So if everybody recalls, um, the board approved in May, um, a contract for us to, uh, an earn to a contract with Civic Plus to design a new website. So what you see up on the screen and in your packet is a high-level timeline. So what we are currently going through right now is we are analyzing the current website. We had been, um, we did a website survey to get input. There's been discussions with the board, uh, with staff, and with people served. Um, from there, we are, uh, providing that information back to our vendor. And with that process is still in progress, and it's going to be wrapping up in the next couple of weeks. Once they have that information, Civic Plus is going to start devise, ah, cannot talk today, designing and configuring the new website. This is going to be a back and forth process that is going to happen over the next couple of months. So what they'll do is they'll give us ideas, uh, and, you know, they'll give us a framework, and then we will give them feedback on that. Um, we do not have the dates, although we will be bringing back, uh, the proposed website to the work groups, to the board, um, into leadership for, uh, feedback. So be looking for that. My guess is that will probably be somewhere in, sometime in January. Then we have our website reveal, so this is when they will be giving to us our, what we are expected to be our completed website. And from there, then we'll go into training. And during that time, we will maintain our current website as well as the new website. And we have a launch of April 4th, 2022. Are there any questions? All right. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Diana. And I believe we have, um, Christine Burke with the customer services update. I'm sk- sorry. Yes, is that correct? I'm not sure who it is.
That is correct. Good evening, everyone. During the last board meeting when we were talking about our community outreach and awareness, uh, updates, the board expressed some interest in knowing more about customer service. And then also there were some questions about engagement with people we serve, specifically to engagement with the board, and then, um, being more aware of how engagement encounters are going with our organization and with people we serve in the community, especially in light of the pandemic. So I did ask Linda Bartoloni-Till to join me to talk specifically about the customer services update as that was a topic that was brought up independently. I am going to let her speak first, and then I'll take over.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Linda Bartoloni-Till. I'm the manager of customer services. And I'm going to share some data with you, and feel free to ask me some questions.
I think we lost the sound online.
I'm wondering the same thing, too.
And I'm online. We've lost the conference room? I can hear you, Adam.
Yeah, I'm trying to open up the screen to see if the, um, connection for the conference room is still active, but I can't see it here. Let's see. Yeah, I can't verify it, but yeah, I think we lost connection to the boardroom.
Yep. Well, how's it going?
I'm doing all right. It was a long day for Monday, but it was good.
Yep. Well, we have this study session next week, Thursday, and we start early. Well, I'll be late to it. And the part I want to hear most is what Ben has to say based on this election that just happened.
Right, agreed.
Uh, because that's what we'll have to do between now and the end of next year during lame duck, so.
Right.
Trying to see who else is online. Is that Christine Nicholas, Jillian on our section?
Jonathan, it's Dr. Poseos. I'm, uh, texting, uh, Diana here in the chat.
Okay, thanks, doctor. How's it going here, Ed?
Good, good. Hope you're doing well.
I am, I am. Someone there?
Hi, um, hi, Mr. Lansman, can you hear us now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so did you guys get the customer service update?
No, it cut, it cut out right before it was going to start, right as Linda was talking.
Oh, Linda would be happy to do that again.
Hello, I'm going to do my report again for you guys. I'm sorry that happened. So this, um, diagram that you're looking at shows the number of customer services contacts that we've gotten from January 2021 through October 31st, 2021. So our contact total is 5,406 so far. And we get contacts different ways in our, in customer services. We get it through electronic communications, paper correspondence, surveys, tele- and telephone. And we have two kinds of contacts we get. We get calls directly from, um, individuals who get services with us and/or their family members about different things. And we also get people who are, we call non-consumer customer service contacts, and that's from people in the community, like public health, schools, community members at large. A lot of those calls are wanting to know how to navigate our system, try to understand our system. We also get calls from, we also give a lot of, um, referrals and, um, numbers out to people that are looking for other things that may not be related to us. And then we provide, um, all different kinds of resolution to these calls. Like we, you know, we make phone calls on behalf of people, we make appointments for them sometimes with different things. We give them community, um, phone numbers, and we send out different brochures to people. So we do all kinds of different things. So do you have any questions for me?
This is Sheila. Ms. Newman has her hand up.
Linda, the surveys, are they, uh, different from the ones that MSET does? Or is that additional support to MSET?
Um, we do, we don't, we don't do, we have a branch that, we have surveys done, um, by peer allies that do the surveys on, once somebody goes through their intake at the agency, we have peer allies that call them to talk about their intake experience at the actual agency. And if they check a box on that survey that says they want a follow-up call to customer services, then they send us a, an email, an alert, and we do follow up. MSET does the same thing. If they talk to someone who's dissatisfied, they will check a box, they will send us something, and we will follow up in a customer service call about the dissatisfaction.
Ms. Namie Dyer, I don't have any hands up in the room.
Okay. Thank you so much for that update.
Thanks for joining me, Linda. Yep, Christine has.
Christine, if you'd like to, yep, go ahead and talk about the outreach and awareness.
Last month, uh, we also talked about changes to this form. So the board will notice we put an additional column where it says events, and then audience who we're targeting, whether or not we're hosting or- who we're targeting, whether or not we're hosting or supporting the event. I think this is really important. And if you notice on the first line, we put what our staff is doing. So throughout the year, there are different times where we will be the lead. You will notice we were really busy in September during Suicide Prevention Awareness Month and Recovery Celebration Month. And other times, we are supporters of our community partners. The holiday season is one where we, as a staff and organization, step up to support organizations who are helping needy families within our community. Where we have supporter, usually we are attending, somebody has contacted us, they've asked for a speaker. We do have a speakers bureau, a list of employees who we have on hand as content experts for various topics. And then we also host events. We do events and school resources throughout the year. So you'll see we're in Holly, we're in Ferndale. November is a big time for veterans, awareness activities. And this list is always changing. Between the time I finished it on Thursday and today, we, of course, had the request from Representative Cooper. We were asked to speak at a library for seniors in mental health. And then we were asked to speak at the Oakland Schools Parent Advisory Council. We never say no. Our staff is always on hand 24/7. I would really say they, on weekends, Saturdays, Sundays in the evening. And it's really something we're proud of. I know sometimes I talk to the board about our work group efforts and how many of our staff sit on work group throughout the community. And this continued throughout the school or throughout the pandemic.
Can you advance the slide, Suzanne?
In regards specific to board engagement, I know there were some conversations about lack of public comment and participation in meetings. So I just wanted to give the board an update on the ways we currently promote. We include the agenda or the calendar for board meetings in our electronic newsletter that goes to about 1,000 people. We also include the schedule in our stepping stones. That is mailed to about 14,000 people. A lot of times people ask me, well, there's a big gap between the number of people we serve and the number of people we mail. In part, that is because we do not do direct mailings to people who have substance use disorders or receiving substance use disorder services. What we do instead is package newsletters and we send them to our service sites. So that helps explain that discrepancy. And then we also post it on our public calendar. Dana and I talked, brainstormed, she had some ideas about how we can promote attendance at the board meetings in the future. Once this board approves its 2022 calendar, we can schedule electronic announcements for the entire year to go out two days before a meeting that says, please attend our board meetings. We can also simultaneously schedule announcements to go on our social media sites. And then the other thing we had hoped to do to promote board engagement is training and communications have, we have our 2022 calendar built out for as far as events go. We don't release that information until this board approves its calendar to make sure there's no conflict before we finalize. At that time, we are going to submit a list of events for the entire year for the board and hopefully encourage people to sign up to attend two to three throughout the year just to help connect the board with the people we serve. And then in doing so, maybe that will increase attendance. Do you have any questions about plans or any ideas? Another area I wanted to touch base on is the fact that we do record our meetings. We started that practice several years ago based on input we heard from people we serve. Transportation to meetings, especially in the evening, can be difficult. Very early on, when I started here, I would hear from people whom we serve that would say because of their regimen and their prescriptions of their medications for their treatments, that sometimes they have to take their medication early in the evening so they cannot come to a meeting. They've also asked me to start meetings not at nine o'clock that are in person, but can we start them at 10:00 a.m. because there might be some residual effects. So we've tried to be very accommodating to the needs of the people we serve. One thing that we have noticed and that we know to be true based on if we don't post those meetings right away, because during the day is more accommodating for the people we serve, they're watching the board meetings. So they watch them at the clubhouses, they watch them at our vocational service sites. So when we look back on our data and on our YouTube channel, which is where we post, we can see that for a committee of the whole, we have between 10 to 20 views. That encompasses larger groups. For the board meetings, we can have anywhere between 26 to 40 views. And again, that might be at a clubhouse where 20 people are, that might be at a vocational setting where 30 or 40 people are. So there is engagement in terms of people are listening to the board. There's just some barriers because of the evening that we can't have, people aren't coming here. So I wanted to bring that up in terms of we're watching the data and trying to stay as connected to people as we can. Any questions about that?
Christine? Yep. It looks like Jonathan and then Hadass both had questions.
Hi, Christine. Thank you for this update. I know that we post these recordings, but the question I have is, in addition to that, could we ever livestream or delay livestream by a minute or two? So that people could see it while we're having the meeting? And then maybe that might drive as well the possibility of outside public comment?
We did livestream in the past. We are looking at some equipment updates that's something we could look into consideration. A lot of what I would hear is in regard to, especially with people with various medication treatments, is they may need to take their medication at six or at seven. And so they even have, and what people will say to me is, I have a prescribed time when my doctor would like me to be in bed. So we can discuss that. Again, we livestreamed for about two years, I think, before we returned to recordings. And in part, it was because of the pandemic and some other issues as far as comments being made during the meetings. We wanted to be respectful of the people we serve. So it gave us an opportunity to have conversations with people. And so one of the things I will give as an example, sometimes when people are getting public comment, there's some emotion. And people would talk about something that was personal and they made that choice themselves. I would like to give them the next day to say, before we post this for the whole world to see, because once you post something, it's there forever. And there's a different feel when you're sitting at this microphone, especially for the people we serve when they're telling a story, than to know that that's going to be posted for a million people to see. So that was one of the considerations. And when we went to a recording, it really gave me an opportunity and us as an organization to be mindful of people sometimes being caught up in the moment and making sure before we actually posted this information that they were comfortable with it. They usually sign releases, all of those things. But all of that said, I just think it's due diligence to give people that time to think about what we're going to be sharing with a larger group of individuals.
Well, I wondered if we could do both, the streaming as well as the posted afterwards? That's all.
Yeah, we can look into that, Jonathan.
Thank you.
Do you have another question? Yep, Hadass has one. Hadass, I think you're muted.
Hi, thank you. I was muted. My question was regarding, actually I have a couple of questions and one comment. The electronic newsletter for 1,000 people. So is that the one that we receive, the board members receive? Or is that a different electronic newsletter?
That is our Let's Talk newsletter. That is a subscrib- it's a subscription on our website. I believe the board, I'm not, I think the board, I think I've been posting, I don't think which one I've been putting in Boardable, but the Let's Talk is on our website as well.
So do we want more people to see that? I mean, because when you say it's an electronic newsletter, that means that you have their email? Or what does that mean?
People subscribe to receive it.
So is it something we should be promoting is really what I'm asking?
Yeah, yeah. We do promote it, but we can promote it further, absolutely. I, yeah, I understand what you're saying. You know, there's this balance between how we share and when we share information and when people are asking for it. But I appreciate what you're saying and letting more people know that we do have the Let's Talk newsletter.
Yeah. If it's something we want promoted and also, I mean, if it has the valuable information, which I'm just trying to determine if it's the one that I get. Okay. And then my second question is email meeting reminders to stakeholders using constant contact. So how many people do we have as stakeholders in our emails?
In our email database?
Yeah, that we're sending this information to?
We have, I think, close to 10,000 now. I would have to look. People subscribe to different lists. So the reach of that information is pretty far. The other thing that we do when working with our provider network, especially with some of our social media, some of our efforts. So for example, if this board was having a meeting, I would send it to our network PR work group and ask them to then send it within their group into the people that they serve directly.
Okay. And do we know?
And then you can, you can do it simult- post it simultaneously on our social media as well.
Yeah. Do we know if that is actually happening? Like, you know, if you ask it, do, like, are you on their list so that you would see if they posted it?
Yeah, we follow each other on our social media sites. The other thing that, and electronic newsletters are not the end all be all. Like, you really do have to do your calls and you have to have those relationships. But we can see how many people opened them, how many people shared them. We can monitor that. That was a new idea that we came up with. Dana and I had talked about when she was trying to follow up with the board's comments about how do we engage people more with this board? And we had decided, well, if we, beyond sending out the newsletters, if we started or posting the information in newsletters, if we started sending email reminders and social media reminders, that might engage more people. We've not started doing that yet because we're waiting, as soon as the board finishes the, approves the 2022 calendar, then we can start sending out those reminders and have that scheduled.
Okay. And I think the question about engagement really was regarding public comment. And regarding public comment, even before, before the pandemic, we were having less and less public comment and we talked about and we never really explored on why, you know, what was happening when someone gave their public comment? How was the board responding? How we were required to respond? What was the follow-up to the communication? So there's this whole piece that was really never fully explored about public comment, the purpose of public comment and the board's responsibility to public comment. So I don't know when we're going to talk about that, but that was part of the issue why I felt we were talking about board engagement. It's just we need to talk about the purpose of public comment and what, what we're supposed to do with that information.
So the process that we've had in place for years and I, you know, I've had this conversation with some people before that, when, when we were having a reduction in funding because of rebasing and we were losing general fund dollars and it was impacting people's lives, that you had a larger turnout of people because they were concerned. Our process was always and has always been the customer service response to the public comment. Now, with that being said, they find the content expert, that comment, that response is approved by the CEO and then the response is shared with the board. So the board would actually get copies of the question that was submitted during public comment and they would also receive the response that was sent to that individual. So that, that has been our process.
I know that happened once. There was, that was one time we had gotten, because this is something that I've been very interested in, that one time we got the comments and the results and saw the letters and we talked about improving the letters because they were very vague and follow-up. So this isn't to have a conversation now. This is really, I guess, Jonathan, I'm requesting, you know, on a study session that we really talk about public comment. So, but thank you. This is really good to see where we are with board engagement. I'm done with my questions.
I've noted that, Hadass.
I'll just go over this data pretty quickly. So these indicate our numbers in regard to who's following us on social media. I do follow where we, where we fit in with other PIHPs and our service providers. We're about mid-level. Our PIHPs who are engaged with social media have, most of them have between 25, 27. There are only a few of us, three of us. The other PIHPs usually have between 200 and 300. So this is an area that Dana and I are talking about, how do we improve our engagement on social media? Our YouTube number, subscriber numbers are low, but our actual views to YouTube have been really significant. I have a different slide I can show you afterward in terms of people, again, watching board meetings or watching our recordings. How we then measure and how I watch this information is then are we getting increases to our website? So in November of last year, our average website hits were about 15,000. They vary between 15 and 17,000. So between December and August of this year, our average hits to our website have been about 26,000. So we did see a dramatic increase. We can tie this all in when we look at data. Then we're looking at our media coverage. So we get between four to six articles, three to four articles a month. We send out between four to six press releases. Press coverage, valid you, is about 300,000. Can you go to the next website or next? And then we tie this back into when we have an increase in coverage and we have increased with Dana sitting on panels and different members of our staff sitting on panels or interviews in the newspapers. So our engagement on Facebook last year was 100,000. This is because when you share with an organization, it's just, it's just a little different. AMARC, which is the parent group for Mark, is really supportive of us. If they share our page and they have several thousand people, then the reach is farther. Whereas if I send it, I may have only 200 on my Facebook. So we do watch the analytics behind the scenes to compare the, our presence in the community, our hosting of events, our press releases, how often we're in the newspapers. And then we look at, is that impacting our engagement on our website? Is that increasing our engagement on our social media sites? This piece is just highlighting, these are two of, a couple of our videos that we have currently on our YouTube site. And so if you look at that, and it is, would be what I would expect. People go to our sites for our services. So these videos are on our website. They feature people on our staff giving presentations. Recipient Rights is one of our number one sites where people go to visit. They also go to visit HR a lot, but then they go to visit, how do you get services? All of that combined and how we all tie that all in together, I think the most important piece then is, does that increase calls to our access center? And I can usually trace August, September, a really big month for us in terms of community engagement. So it's the springtime. So just to give the board some perspective, January, February, March of this year, the average calls we would get to our access center were anywhere between 2,200 and 2,400. In those months where we are highly active, engaged in the community because of different events going on, so August, we had 2,500. That would have been reflective of July. In September, we had 3,000. That would have been reflective of August. And then in October, we had 3,300 people called our access line. So there is a direct connection between our engagement in the community and our engagement by staff and our different awareness efforts. And we do try to be very mindful of that ripple effect, starting with, did we send a press release out? Was it picked up? Did it result in any social media? Did it result in website? And ultimately, did all of that result in people picking up a phone to call for help? So that, when we look at our overall engagement. And one thing, you know, I looked at these videos and I had to, I just had to pause for a minute because the videos were made in 2018. I thought 2018 and then I had to take out my 2020 plan and say, what were you going to do? What was in your plan before COVID? And our 2020 plan included hiring a new videographer, which we are getting ready to submit an RFP for and really look at what were we, what were we going to do in that year before? We had to pivot and then move quickly to get us caught up to speed for 2022 in regard to some of those changes that we had in mind at the time. So my goal right now is to have new information videos produced, put on our new website by the time it's ready and we should be, we should be able to do that. That's all I have. Do you have any questions? Nope.
I don't see any online either.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Okay, this is the second opportunity for a public comment.
And I do not see an additional public comment in the chat for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Board member comments?
Do you want me to do roll call or by hand?
I think we could just do by hand if people actually have comments.
Doctor Taub.
This is Steve Taub. Thank you everybody for all the information we got tonight. It's quite extensive. And I also would like to apologize to State Rep Cooper, she's a she, not a he, I don't know why I said that.
Mr. Cowan has a comment?
Two things real quick. First, just a follow-up from the building issue. Could somebody just send me an email and tell me how many square feet we're renovating for the $1.5 million? So that, that's fine. Second, I wanted to give a shout-out to my home community of Royal Oak. Saturday, they had, for I think the fifth or sixth year, the annual Ruck 22 March, which is to create awareness of veteran suicide. They did it in conjunction with the local VFW, with the Veterans Events Committee that the city sponsors. And the 22 is to, either you bring 22 pounds of goods in a backpack or 22 items. And the beneficiary this year of both the money that was raised and the items was the John Dingell Veterans Affairs, or Veterans Facility. So I want to thank them for doing that. Unfortunately, I had a family funeral to go to and I couldn't participate this year, but with many others going to make a donation. And finally, in observance of Veterans Day, please say something nice or do something nice for a veteran this Thursday.
Thank you. I have no other hands up in the room.
Okay, let's start with Adam online.
I just wanted to say once again, thank you really quickly to the staff for the Herculean effort in putting these information-filled presentations together so we can be informed as board members. The content was really wide-ranging tonight and really appreciated. So thank you very much, have a good night.
Thank you, Adam. Jonathan?
Thank you. I also want to take a moment to thank the staff from the top on down for putting together the various presentations, whether that was for employee benefits or the, the study on the organizational structure and pay grades, or the MSET and the other surveys or the customer service that's going on and how far we reach into our customer service or our communications and outreach. All really interesting information and perspective. I hope we can take that and leverage this, you know, as we come out of this pandemic, that we can make an extra effort, maybe this holiday, these next holidays, to reach out into the various communities, into the various residential and day center organizations and, you know, just renew that touch that we've had in the past. I think that, that helps them think that, you know, remind them that we think of them every day. By seeing them and reaching out and being involved with them, then they know it from an actual perspective, not an academic perspective. And thank you all. Have a good Veterans Day.
Thank you, Jonathan. Any other comments from board members? Okay, seeing you're hearing none, can we get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion, it's Jonathan.
Thank you, Jonathan. Do we have a second?
A second, it's Adam.
Thank you, Adam. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are adjourned. Have a good night, everybody.
Take care.